Going to call the meeting to order. It is 6 o'clock on Tuesday, October 4th, and this is the regular meeting for the Sanford City Council. This meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to 1 MRSA Section 403b 2d and Section 6 of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure as amended and adopted, May 3rd, 2022. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099 using meeting ID 83577713005 and password 181436, or via computer at the link provided on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the City of Sanford website at www.sanfordmain.org under email citydepartment/citycouncil. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in a moment of silence, please. Roll call. Counselor Termath.
Present.
Counselor Brink.
Present.
Counselor Martel.
Present.
Counselor Hanselman is absent with notice. Counselor Stackpole.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hurlhey.
Present.
And I'm Anne Marie Mistracchio, the mayor of the City of Sanford, and this evening we're joined by Steve Buck, City Manager, and Larissa Ricketts, the City Manager's Executive Assistant. First item on the agenda, minutes, 22-464-01. Order to approve the minutes from the regular City Council meeting held on Tuesday, September 20th, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve? Counselor Brink.
So moved.
Is there a second? Counselor Termath.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all of those who approve the motion. That is unanimous of all those present. Mayor's report, City Council Subcommittee reports. We don't have any Subcommittee reports because we didn't have any Subcommittee meetings. I just have a couple of things, some what I consider important things to put on your calendars. The first is that October 27th, just keep in mind that we're having a workshop in City Hall chambers concerning roads and more. That's how I'm looking at it. Bring your questions, 6 o'clock here. And then there will be, the Friends of Downtown are having, they're inviting you to an event called Dessert First. It's October 20th, 2022, in Memorial Gym, 5:30 to 7:00. This is a free and fun community event, and if you got the, it's desserts. So, free desserts from local artisans, free coffee and water, free crafting activities for young attendees. Feel free to bring the family and your neighbors that live, work, and play in Sanford. There'll be guided conversations and activities. Dessert First is the first initial outreach event to gather input from the community to help the Friends of Downtown understand what citizens love most about Sanford, what future they want for it, and how best to achieve it. And the Friends of Downtown is a group that's working to foster and promote economic revitalization and community spirit that will generate a sense of pride in Sanford and create a community where people will desire to live, work, and play. So there's a, you can share your interest in joining by responding on Facebook, but I encourage everybody to attend. I know I'm going to be there, and I'm really looking forward. And the desserts was the hook that got me. So, thank you. Oh, the words, oh, I'm sorry, I had the wrong date for the words, the roads workshop. It's October 25th. I'm sorry. Thank you. Should've known that. Thank you. Next is the City Manager's report.
Thank you. First item I have on the report for this evening is an update on the Comcast construction. Comcast is the city's second cable TV franchise. It is currently working to complete construction on their new network. Communications from Brian Christensen, who is the Senior Director of Government and Regulatory Affairs. As of September 21st, he indicated that Comcast had passed their 50% mark as far as the number of houses they anticipated to pass. They've now passed over 5,600 residential and commercial properties. There was an initial, excuse me, there was an initial delay obtaining poll permits to allow for the state, for the start of construction, but since last January, the issue has been resolved. I asked him what had changed there. He said you made mention of that in the council, in your counselors, in the manager's report about the difficulty with Comcast and poll permits. And I said, well, were they paying attention that diligently? He said Google Alerts lets them know. So, keep that in mind. That's a very effective means. So, to date Comcast has constructed 73 miles of physical plan and is operating of their anticipated 200 miles to be built in Sanford. The two new public education or governmental peg channels will launch on channels 22 and 95 starting this, by mid-November of this year. Both of these channels will be on the basic subscription, subscription package for customers on the network. Comcast will start their mass marketing campaign in the very near future as they are nearing the 50% mark in the overall construction. A press release is pending for this announcement. In the interim, the direct mailings have been going out to those streets that they are constructing on. They put mailings out six to eight weeks prior to passing your home, and they do mailings the week of construction on that street, as well as mailings for up to three weeks passing the homes. City looks forward to having competitive offerings of the state of our network within Sanford for all residents and customers in the area of multi-channel and internet services. Heart and soul, I'll pass on that because the mayor had covered that for us earlier. The next item I wanted to bring up is LD 2003. That is an act to implement the recommendations of the Commission to Increase Housing Opportunities in Maine by Studying Zoning and Land Use Restrictions. Maine Department of Economic and Community Development, as they were so directed by this law, has just issued a guidance document on municipal impacts from this new legislation. Municipalities are to be compliant with the new law by June 30th of 2023. A strategy to meet this timeline is pending. The rulemaking continues on this new law. The major topics covered under LD 2003 that impact us as a municipality is under Section 4. It provides for additional density for, quote, "affordable housing developments" in certain areas. So for any area that we already have zoned for residential housing development, it doubles the density that's, that would otherwise be allowed there unless we take specific activities that may deem that as unadvisable. Section 5 generally requires that municipalities allow between two and four housing units per buildable lot where housing is permitted. But again, there has to be the minimum square footage per unit as defined in that ordinance. Section 6 requires that municipalities allow accessory dwelling units to be located on the same lot as a single-family home under certain conditions. Our community already has made that allowance and has set those standards. Sections 3 and 7 require that the state establish statewide and regional housing production goals and set forth ways in which local governments can coordinate with that goal. So that is still ongoing. DECD is supposed to develop those elements and pass those forward to the municipalities. So between now and the end of June, I believe that we'll be able to come into complacency with the new law, so we'll work diligently to make any amendments that we might need as far as our current zoning laws are concerned. The next element is the city's new website. The new website is being produced for us by ReVise. It will go live tomorrow, October 5th, 2022, fingers crossed. Our communications coordinator, Ms. Wilson, indicates that ReVise is working on the last-minute links to major components, and then the new IP address will be activated for access. Communications will provide a demonstration and update on the website at the October 18th council meeting, allowing, allowing for this two-week period for adjustments and minor modifications. ReVise, revised aerial photography is being shot for the fall season imagery on October 13th. We're waiting to get better leaf change and color before that, that new drone footage is being shot. But until we get that new footage and get it edited, we'd be relying on the new imagery that's been incorporated into the site already that was shot earlier this summer. The new website will allow people to sign up for email and text notifications in a number of areas using eNotifi. The city is purchasing MailChimp to push a biweekly informational newsletter, as well as other important notifications and updates. As earlier indicated, communications will continue to make ADA and other updates to the site after the launch to garner a stronger search result within Google and other platforms to maximize contacts via the new website. So there's certain ADA elements we're specifically holding back. We'll make those adjustments because Google takes note of that and pushes you up higher in the search status. Absentee ballots will arrive from the printer this Thursday on 10/6, and for those who have already requested an absentee ballot, those ballots will be mailed out as early as that Friday, 10/7. For anyone wanting to vote by absentee, they may continue to request a ballot up to November 3rd of this year for the November 8th election by calling the city clerk's office at 207-324-9125, or via link on the city's website and/or the State of Maine website, and I've included that address in here. It's fairly long. And the mayor mentioned our pending workshop, and that's all the information I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. One question. When you say it's going to be live tomorrow, does that mean like at 12:01, or live tomorrow like at noon, or?
It should be live tonight at midnight.
At midnight.
It should be running tomorrow morning when you click to check.
All right. Thanks. Counselor Stackpole, you had a question of the City Manager?
Yeah, Steve, I know this is website-related, but is there any discussion anywhere in the pipeline here or with the company that's, that's helping to revise the website of some kind of mobile app that would?
So the, the design, the new design of the website will look the same on your phone as it does on your PC. So there was a lot of effort that's gone into that, much different from what the website is that we currently use now. No, we haven't talked about having a Sanford-specific app.
Yeah.
There are apps embedded within the website, though.
Sure, sure. I just, you know, whatever, put that on somebody's radar that. I know it's a, it's a large next step, but it might be a logical step to have some kind of mobile app. Well, you're talking about mobile-friendly, and that's great, but what also is that's, I can just picture any number of people just taking out their phone and wanting to go to a certain thing within the app. The other thing is, can people just stop by the town clerk's office and pick up an absentee ballot also, or do they have to request it by mail?
They can stop at the clerk's office and request. They'll do voter verification, and they can give you an absentee right then.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications and presentations, and can I just, before we start, I forgot to ask everybody to make sure your phones are off, please. On mute at least. They don't have to be totally off, just on mute. Communications and presentations, 22-467-01. Presentation from the Sanford Sewage District about pending rate change. Okay.
Councilmembers, City Administrator Larissa. My name is Andre Russo, and I'm Superintendent for the Sanford Sewage District. So we have been, the district has been faced with, will be faced with a revenue shortfall due to recent legislation, specifically LD 1911. LD 1911 prohibits any beneficial reuse of wastewater byproducts due to the PFOS chemicals or compounds which have been detected in our compost. I was just going to show an overview of our facility, if I may, just so everybody knows what we're talking about with our compost facility and, and our landfill that's soon to be closing as well. So, let me just bring this up to about... So you can see here to the right of the video as it's playing, the compost facility, it's panning down. But that, that was recently built in 2016 as a way to deal with our residuals as we treat wastewater. In back of the, the compost facility, no sense of playing this whole thing, right here. I'm going to pause it. So in front of us is the compost facility that was constructed back in 2016 as a way to stabilize the residuals and a method to distribute to compost customers. In back of the compost facility is our 5.3-acre secured sledge landfill. As you can see, it's in their capacity there in 2016, and we have about 1,000 yards of capacity remaining. So some people may ask, geez, what happened to that landfill? We've, we've been utilizing it over the years. In fact, we can no longer sell our compost, so we've been, been putting our compost into the landfill to bring it up to a subgrade so we can get ready for a full closure, which is going to be slated to take place in either 2024 or 2025. So LD 1911 really poses some problems for not just Sanford Sewage District, but every wastewater treatment plant in the state of Maine. State of Maine is the leader in the country with prohibition of beneficial reuse, both with compost, land applications of biosolids, and liquid septicage. So that poses many problems in the state of Maine because a lot of subsurface waste disposal systems are strategically located throughout, throughout Maine. There's, there's many residents here in Sanford that have subsurface disposal systems. So it's not only the waste generated by communities with wastewater treatment plants, but it's also coming from us if you have a, a subsurface disposal system. Some of you may or may not know what the PFOS chemicals are. They're, they're known as forever chemicals. They last a long time. They've been around for decades. Some examples are food packaging, non-stick cookware, clothing, cosmetics, dental products, fabric softeners, stain-resistant carpets and furniture, various waxes, just to name a few. Recently, you know, we, this facility, it was, it wasn't cheap, $1.8 million. We borrowed the money and supported it with a rate increase that was last implemented, a three-tiered approach, starting in 2014. And we raised the rates a total of 17%. That equates to one penny per gallon right now. So we are looking at alternative ways to continue with the compost, but the, really the only method is to dispose these residuals or our compost into licensed landfills that are well over 100 miles from this community. So transportation is going to be a big cost, as well as tipping fees going into these, into the landfill. I've been working diligently with the landfill operators to come up with a contract. We haven't signed one just yet. And there is an option that some of these landfills may have an interest in our compost, but obviously we're going to have to pay a tipping fee to dispose of these. So we recognize that this is not a great time to raise rates, but we're going to have to cover our costs. Like I said, we haven't raised the rates since 2016. We've been doing that fiscally with, with being more efficient with the collection and treatment of wastewater here in the facility, I mean, excuse me, in Sanford. So, back to our current rates. So currently, we assess every customer of the Sanford Sewage District, $7.50 per 100 cubic feet of water. That's equivalent to 750 gallons of water. Break that down, as I said previously, that's one penny per gallon. The average household that has conservative water usage is just about $200 a quarter. We know this is going to hurt large businesses, not hurt, but it's going to, it's going to impact large businesses that use a lot of water. It's also going to impact the fixed-income residents. I've been working with York County Community Action, so there's ways for those, those folks that are on fixed income to reach out to York County Community Action. And Maine State Housing recently started a program, the Water Assistance Program, so they can reach, reach out to Maine State Housing and for assistance in, in times of difficulty in paying the sewer bills. I've gone out to the Quanis and Rotary Club to explain the potential rate increase. And lastly, we're working with several consultants amongst the wastewater field to come up with means and methods to, one, dry the, the residuals coming off a wastewater treatment plant. If you can imagine, the, the residuals still contain a large amount of water. On average, 80% of water, 80% in a truckload is water. The rest are residuals. So it doesn't make sense to be trucking wet residuals hundreds of miles to these, to these landfills. But to come up with these, these methods to dry the residuals is going to be expensive. So regionally, we're trying to come up with, with some sort of a drying method, but also we're looking at the science of destroying these, these PFOS compounds, and that's going to be more cumbersome for all of us because these, these PFOS compounds have been around for a long time. They're a carbon fluorine compound that are very hard to break, that fluorine compound. So it's probably going to take a lot of heat and time to destroy that. So I will keep, keep my, my customers as well as the council apprised as, as more information comes about on that front. I welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Counselor Termath.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for being here tonight, Andre. Appreciate it. Can you expand on a little bit from the, the annual testing that's required by state and what goes into that and how they derive from, you know, the forever chemicals versus what's regular compost?
So back in 2018, Maine DEP changed the agronomical rules and regulations for spreading or beneficial reuse, and they added the PFOS compounds, and specifically, there were three. I'm not going to get into the full scientific names because they're long, but it's the PFOA, PFOS, and PFBS, and set limits. It was 5.2 nanograms per gram, 2.5 and 1.8. So any beneficial reuse program had to test for these, these compounds. So we did that. We took a hit on, on ours. But then there was means and methods to be able to continue to distribute our compost by using a spreading calculation spreadsheet provided by DEP that allowed us to prove to our end-users as well as the regulators that they, we weren't exceeding background levels. So that's been ongoing, but then it evolved into a complete moratorium for about two months in 2019. Again, they revamped the, the testing. So now we have to test our residuals twice a year, our leachate coming out of our landfill. And additionally, with this LD 1911, we are starting to test our effluent that's going back into the Malsum River. That's being paid for by DEP, but there's going to be 10 rounds of, of sample events for our effluent. But that, and that's every wastewater treatment plant that discharges to the waters of Maine.
Any other questions? Counselor, Deputy Mayor Hurlhey, and then I'll...
Andre, why, I noticed that Sanford hasn't had a heavy hit on the PFA testing. Is there a reason for that, or?
Actually, we have. We've, we've spent close to $10,000 on additional analysis of PFOS, and it's, it's troubling to me because on the wastewater side, there isn't an approved method. It's a modified method from the drinking water analysis. But we're pretty comfortable that EPA is going to pass that.
Yeah. Well, I've noticed like a lot of the farms haven't been, maybe I'm looking at the wrong...
The farms, so any, any farm land that has had residuals spread on had, had a license, and those fields have been tested. So either the soils have been tested or the groundwater, i.e. drinking water, has been tested.
Okay. Counselor Martel.
Yeah, thank you for coming out tonight. I just had a couple of questions. One, if we do end up having to truck all this material away, do you have a rough estimate on what that means to the average homeowners? And then you mentioned some potential incinerator-type technology. Does that seem like that's something viable? Are there other communities that are using that? Hopefully you can speak to that a little bit.
So I'll start with the easy one first. Incineration, one would think that would be the ultimate way. There are no incinerators in the state of Maine. The closest one to us is Manchester, New Hampshire. They, they are not big enough to accept outside residuals, and you would think that would destroy the PFOS compounds, but studies show that there's some precursive activity taking place into smokestacks, so studies are coming out on that. The, we, we were thinking, I, I was thinking of a 10% increase, but I don't know until I can get that final contract and where we're going, including transportation.
You know, I just want to say that I appreciate how difficult this is going to be for all of us, but there's a reason why we're here right now, and there's a reason why they're called forever chemicals, and they're dangerous chemicals. And there are dairy farms that don't exist anymore, and farmers that can't farm their, their properties. So I think that I'm hopeful that this will spur us into being in the forefront of figuring out a way to manage this problem because it's been created over time, and it's not going to go away. And honestly, I, I feel like we're in a better position than some other communities that don't even have wastewater treatment plants like we do and still have to deal with this issue, or that are trying to figure out a way to get clean water to people whose wells are just not adequate now. So thank you for coming in front of us, and I look forward to being informed as we go forward, but humans created the problem, and humans are going to have to figure out how to fix it, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to do that.
You're absolutely right. I just want to finish with stating that my plan is to formally present a rate increase to the Board of Trustees in one week from now. We have our regular Board of Trustees meeting on October 11th, and then we plan on having a public hearing on the rate increase on October 27th. So when you mention, when you mention that...
Oh, sorry. I really made you nervous there for a minute, didn't I?
We plan on having our public hearing here in chambers, so...
Excellent.
That's it.
Thank you, and I appreciate the information. And I'm really sorry I made you nervous about the 27th.
That's all right.
Actually, you were probably glad because it meant you weren't going to be, have to be here on the 27th, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's it for that. Now we have public participation. I know I have a list, but I have at least one person on Zoom. Is there only one person on Zoom that's signed up, Larissa?
So far.
Okay. I will call on Chris Haywood, who said he would like to speak on, under public comment, and this is for items that are not on the agenda.
Yes, my name is Christopher Haywood, Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Chris.
I wish, just want to let you guys know that, you know the crosswalk between Domino's and the fire station? The lights, the crosslights don't seem to be working.
Thank you. Can you write that down, Steve? Thanks. Is that it, Chris?
Yes, that's it.
Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention.
All right.
And before I call on the people that are on the list, I just want to make sure that everybody is on here is for, I, for, public comment is for things that are not on the agenda and not a public hearing? Okay. All right. Althea Patine.
I'm not hiring change numbers.
Okay. Jonathan Mapes. Public hearing? Okay. And Crystal, no last name? Oh, do you have a last, do you want to speak now?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I want to say something, but I don't want to be a burden.
You're not a burden. It's public comment. You're not a burden, it's public comment time. Just, what's your last name, Crystal?
Martell.
Crystal Martell? Just come up here to the, uh, mic, please.
Right now?
Yes, right now. And just speak into the mic, tell us your name and where you live, and, um, then you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Crystal. I live in Sanford and I just wanted to let, um, tell you that, um, the Sanford has a great trail system in Maine. Sorry, my nose is a little stuffed up. And, um, um, I was out hiking on the trails, um, yesterday and I noticed, um, that, that, uh, the, somebody was clearing another trail, but they put, put debris on the previous trail. And so it's kind of inaccessible or not very, not very well acceptable anyway. And I just want to make, just for asking you guys to make sure the trails are, are clear so, so we can hike up the, hike along the trail system. And, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. And you can always call the, um, Parks and Rec and let them know that there's a problem on one of the trails. They are happy to hear that information and not have to wait till, like, the day that you find it. Just give them a call and leave a message.
Okay.
Thanks, Crystal. Okay, public hearings. The city council will take public comment on the following. Twenty-two dash four-three-five dash zero-one. A public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the new application submitted by Pine Tree Maine Two LLC for an adult-use retail cannabis store license at twenty-two Smata Drive, Sanford, Maine. Um, I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, then I will declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash four-six-five dash zero-one. A public hearing to disseminate information on a bond question and proposed amendments to the Sanford City Charter appearing on the November eighth, twenty-twenty-two ballot. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? And I think, Steve, you're going to begin or is someone else?
It might be easier if, if somebody's here from the public that wants to speak on any one of these first.
Um, well, did you want to give your information first or did you want to?
I can.
I mean, I, I think that maybe if you, if you all don't mind that the public that's here to speak on this item, if I just let the, because the city manager is just going to give a little broad overview of it and then we'd love to hear anybody from the public that's here to speak on this item.
Good. I don't know about the little or the, the broad, I think, is there, but I don't know about the little.
Oh, really?
So, uh, what we've, what we've developed is, um, so in this, in this format, it's a voter's guide. So, um, communications will be disseminating this later on. We're, we're going to draw from questions that might be asked here to see if we need to amend it further. Uh, so without ado, the first question on the referendum for this, this fall, for November eighth, is question one pertains to the International Woolen Mill Site Bond. Shall the city authorize the treasurer and the mayor to issue a general obligation securities? I'm not going to read all of this. Uh, up to a million dollars for the purpose of demolition, environmental cleanup, construction of surface parking and other related capital projects at the International Woolen Mill Site. So this pertains to the largest mill complex that, that is there. It is owned by Regco, is a defunct and bankrupt corporation. Uh, the city has perfected all legal actions possible. We, we do have a court ruling for Regco, uh, to pay for the demolition and remediation of the site for which we know they are going to be in default because the corporation is defunct. So if you're a member of the voting public here, uh, a yes vote will authorize the issuance of a bond of up to one million dollars to utilize as match and program funds for the environmental cleanup, capital projects for demolition and remediation, and construction of surface parking associated with the International Woolen Mill properties. The borrowed funds will be used as matching funds for other sources of federal, state, and local funds to mitigate the mill building and site. The city has a court order for Regco, the owner, to pay for the demolition. Regco is defunct and without resources to address the environmental liabilities. A no vote will not raise funds towards International Woolen Mill remediation and the owner of record, Regco, is in default of facilitating a cleanup action. The mills will remain in a deteriorating state until other solutions or funding is identified. The fiscal impact for question one, a yes vote, if authorized, will, will give issuance of up to a million dollars through the Maine Municipal Bond Bank for a ten-year term, one thousand dollars in principal, one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in interest over that ten-year period, for an estimated, uh, annual assessment of one hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars each for the next ten years.
That's one million dollars of principal. You said one thousand.
Oh, well, wishful thinking.
Yes, I wish too.
So can you just expand, though, that that one million dollars will, um, leverage other funds? So I think that that's an important point.
That's absolutely what we anticipate. Uh, so we, we, uh, will be putting forward an application to the EPA. Um, there is a larger amount of funding coming, uh, into the EPA in this next round and we anticipate for more than the next round, uh, because of the, uh, infrastructure funds coming in from the feds. Uh, we can apply for, uh, both an, uh, an assessment and a remediation grant and/or another round of the multipurpose grants, which we were successful in obtaining the last time. We also will make application, uh, for example, to, uh, the Regional Planning Commission that has both grant and loan funds for this environmental type of work. Uh, the federal EDA also has funds that could assist in this, so we'd be looking for a multitude of, um, various leveraged funding sources to reduce the, the principal burden upon property taxation here because of this abandoned facility.
Okay.
The next question on the ballot is, shall the Sanford City Charter, Section four oh two point three, be amended to include the position of assessor to be added to the city manager's power of appointments subject to the city council confirmation? Uh, so without reading the entire, uh, passage, currently, only the city manager's appointment of the following position shall be subject to confirmation by the city council, the police chief, fire chief, city clerk, tax collector, and this amendment seeks to add assessor, uh, planning director, code enforcement officer, public works director, city treasurer, and director of the Sanford Emergency Management Agency. So a yes vote will amend the charter to include the position of assessor to the list that the city managers has the power of appointment upon completing a search of the most qualified candidates and then that, um, recommendation will be subject to the confirmation of the city council as our other listed department manager positions. A no vote will continue the city council as appointing an assessor pursuant to state law thirty A, MRSA twenty-five, twenty-six, sub-five, but does not set forth for the city manager as performing the search for the qualified candidate for the position of assessor in the same manner as other critical department managers. So reasonably believe that the assessor's, uh, position was simply left off from that, uh, from the charter as currently drafted, and this amendment seeks to add that position The third question, probably is the largest on the, um, ballot as far as the charter amendments, it is question three. Shall the Sanford City Charter Article Six budget be amended as summarized below? So the summary of the amendments are, uh, it will insert the city council for the review of the municipal and school budgets in lieu of the budget committee. In other words, it eliminates the current budget committee formation. It will maintain the budget review schedule, both in format, uh, of the budget presentation and the public hearing process, processes for annual budget review and vote by the city council. It will maintain submission of school and municipal budget message and submission. It maintains the four percent capital program as a minimum, and one half of that capital program is to be dedicated to non-rolling stock, transportation, infrastructure, that's your streets and roads, but will allow the council to turn, to determine a lesser amount is sufficient in the future. It will amend the school budget adoption to reference the current state law, twenty-eight, uh, twenty-three oh seven, at all, for the validation and adoption subject to voter approval each year. That's the process that goes on now. And it amends Section six nineteen point two, emergency appropriations that may be determined by the city council from two hundred and fifty thousand to one million, subject to an emergency declaration. So a yes vote will amend, make all of those amendments to Article Six, uh, budget. Uh, but it will eliminate the budget committee comprised of four voters appointed at large by the council for a one-year term and three city councilors to review both the municipal and school budgets resulting in a recommendation only at the end of the review process to the city council. The amendment would preserve the entire review process, but insert the city council into the start of the annual review of both the municipal and school budgets. The city council remains the legislative body authorized to approve both municipal and school budgets. The budget message and the public hearings remain unchanged. As described earlier, the capital program remains at four percent, one half goes to the streets and roads. School, uh, budget will still be subject to referendum vote pursuant to state law twenty-eight, twenty-three oh seven. Uh, and the emergency appropriation authority of the city council will be increased from one million, uh, from the current two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, still subject to an emergency declaration. A no vote will leave Article Six intact. It will retain the current budget committee and the resulting recommendation to the city council to consider before budget authorization for both municipal and school budgets. There will be no amendment to the process, timing, reports, or public hearings. Capital program stays at four percent and one half to the streets and roads. School still goes to referendum vote pursuant to state law and the emergency appropriation authority of the city council will remain at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, also subject to emergency declaration. Question number four on the ballot is, shall the, uh, the Sanford City Charter, Section six nineteen point two, emergency appropriations be amended as reprinted below? Uh, this is to, uh, in order to meet a public emergency affecting the health, safety, and welfare of the city, the city council may make emergency appropriations. Any such emergency appropriations shall be so declared in an emergency preamble thereto, separately voted on and receiving, uh, the affirmative vote of at least six members of the city council. To the extent there are no available unappropriated revenues to meet such appropriations, the city council may authorize borrowing not to exceed, and this changes it from two hundred and fifty thousand to one million, with maturities no longer than necessary, taking into account the nature of the emergency and the size of the borrowing. So on this particular article, a yes vote will amend the emergency appropriations authority of the city council from the current two hundred and fifty thousand to one million dollars, thereby modernizing the bonding capacity to a similar capacity from one prior amount was so authorized in two thousand and four. City council would still have, have to authorize such by declaration of emergency, by preamble, to justify the need for the appropriations and would require at least six of the seven councilors voting in the affirmative. A no vote on this question would not amend the charter and would keep the emergency appropriations authority of the city council at the current two hundred and fifty thousand dollar level. Also would require an emergency declaration preamble and a six-vote, supermajority vote of the council to affirm. Question five on the ballot, shall the Sanford City Charter, Section seven oh five, bond issues be amended as, as reprinted below? So Section seven oh five point one is capital projects of the municipal and school departments to be financed through the issuance of bonds in the amount equal to or less than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be amended to raise that to one million dollars, which may be approved by the city council. And under Section seven oh five point two, the capital projects of the municipal and school departments to be financed through the issuance of bonds in the amount over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that would be raised to one million must be approved by the city council and submitted to the qualified voters of the city. So again, a yes vote increases the chartered authority of the council from two hundred and fifty thousand to one million dollars, uh, for their bonding capacity. And a no vote will keep the current bonding authority of the city council capped at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars unless approved by a future referendum vote.
Steve, can you just, um, oh, you did, you were going to go down and talk about the purchasing power because I think that that's critical.
Looking at the purchasing power, so I went back into the history and, and I consulted with, with Deputy Mayor Hurley on this because I knew she knew the history of, of the charters prior to the two thousand and four. But the first reference to this two hundred and fifty thousand dollar authority was in, was in the two thousand and four charter and it's remained stagnant since that period of time. According to the tables I was able to look up, you need three hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars in today's dollars in order to meet the equivalent of that two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, I then looked at, so typically, this type of an emergency appropriation and/or, uh, and/or appropriations not meeting the needs, a road project comes to my mind. So typical, you know, would be storm damage, uh, such as might have, have happened at the Mother's Day storm or such under that. You blow out a significant culvert or strut in the municipality, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars doesn't roll the equipment, right, to start the project. Uh, a million dollars is a more reasonable sum for the council to have that authority, uh, without going to special election for referendum vote or waiting that period of time. So they need to be able to act appropriately and a million dollars seems to be more reasonable. It was difficult, I found two different set of construction tables that, that expressed the change in cost from two thousand and four to two thousand and eighteen, uh, that was at one point eight, and then from that period of two thousand and eighteen through to current, it brought me to two point two. So the construction cost from two thousand and four to current is two point two times higher for the same project. So that, uh, hopefully gives you some relative perspective as far as the change in the purchasing power of the dollar as well as the increased cost of, uh, type of typical emergency appropriation that the council would have to make. All right? Question six, shall the Sanford City Charter, Section nine oh three, planning board be amended as reprinted below? Under nine oh three point three, currently, a majority, uh, majority of the planning board shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business. So it's a seven-person board, so three, three members, um, wait. Majority of the planning board shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business, but a smaller number may adjourn from time to time. At least twenty-four hours notice of the time and place of the holding, uh, such adjourned meetings shall, uh, be given to all members who are not present at the meeting from which the adjournment was taken. Every act of the planning board that requires a vote shall require an affirmative vote of, this is to be amended to four members of the majority of those present in voting. So I think it comes out in the explanation. A yes vote amends the charter to require four members of the planning board, which is a seven-person board, to vote in the affirmative to pass any act of the planning board. This is an increase from a majority of those present, which can be as few as three in voting. A no vote will keep the current number as three to pass any act of the planning board as a majority of those present in voting. So a four-person is a majority, uh, so they could pass an act with three votes as opposed to the, uh, requested amendment of four. The four is in alignment with, it takes four affirmative votes for the city council to pass an act. Uh, so the charter is being sought to be reflective of that same measure for the planning board whereby it would take four affirmative votes.
I believe this is the only board we missed, correct? Uh, most of them are written this way, so this is a real correction.
It is, it is. And the last question on the ballot, question seven, shall the Sanford City Charter, Section fourteen thirteen, definitions be amended by adding, adding the definitions listed below? So I'm not going to read all of the definitions, but the definitions would be for city office, uh, Department of Education, municipal officer, municipal officers, uh, municipal officials, order, ordinance, and resolution. So in the explanation, a yes vote will add to the charter the listed definitions to eliminate ambiguous references currently undefined within the charter to clarify the intent of the charter. A no vote will not add the listed definition and likely result in further future requests for legal interpretation of the various utilizations of these listed terms. So by that, I mean, we have had a number of times that I've had to ask for legal opinions on the charter, um, as it examines the use of the terminology of city office, as it might pertain to somebody being, being appointed to another subcommittee and such. Department of Education, uh, you have Department of Education, you have school board, it's used, uh, somewhat ambiguously, so we wanted to clear up those definitions to make sure that the intent was being expressed there. And in each of these cases, when the definition was struck, the, the entire charter was gone back through to ensure that the definition that was put here, uh, was compliant with the intent of the charter. And our legal counsel did, did the review on that as well. A municipal offer, officer is an elected city councillor. Municipal officers is collectively all elected city councils and comprises and serves as, as the municipal legislative body pursuant to thirty A, MRSA twenty-one, two thousand and one, and two thousand and four. The charter also uses the term order, ordinance, and resolution, um, a bit ambiguously. An order shall mean the action items that are the result of the vote of the city council and thereby state the will of the municipal offices subsequent to full consideration in a public council meeting. An ordinance shall mean the act of voted ordinance authority and limitations as a local law of the city council... local law of the city council by the charter and ordinance power pursuant to thirty A, MRS A three thousand and one, as amended from time to time. And then a resolution shall mean the voted decree of the city council designation, recognition of a person, organization, event, call to action, or firm decision in order or not to order providing a directive.
Okay, that's done, right? We're all set. Okay, so now, members of the public wishing to speak in favor, could you come up to the mic and just state your name and where you live and let us, and speak?
What I did today? Jonathan Mapes, Springvale. I'm questioning why I'm here today after that fine rendition of charter amendments, though it was very nice. Keyword was ambiguous. So I was on the charter commission ten years ago with Mara and Bob, a little bit with Becky, and listened to Budget Review Committee make the modifications, which I do support the changes, all of those changes. How people are going to understand them will be the hard part. But the one I want to talk a little bit about is the budget review. When we amended the charter ten years ago, the council had the power of the checkbook then, has ever since. Budget review has never, the finance committee and then the budget review committee has never had any authority. They thought they did, but they don't. So we're saving a lot of people, the school committee, the council, to get this done, the city manager and his staff, the meetings that department heads have to go through, it's just redundancy. So I, the charter is complex stuff. I mean, it isn't, if you've read it a lot and been involved with a lot of folks talking about it, I didn't know anything about it ten years ago. So eliminating the budget review committee doesn't change anything. The outcome is the same. The bulk of the money is wages and benefits. I would, I would ask the councillors, current and future, to dig in. I suspect many in the past, current and future, don't understand the budget, don't know what they're voting for, don't have a clue. The school committee, I know for a fact, spends a great deal of time on the budget. So when the budget review committee recommended a seventeen-member budget review committee, I thought, yo, this is getting worse. So I would, I would ask voters to pay attention and to vote for folks that have a sense of finance and common sense. So I'm here really just to support all of those recommendations, and I hope the voters do too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, then I'll declare the public hearing closed. Consent agenda. Hearing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Old business, there is none. New business, twenty-two dash four-six-eight dash zero one, a proclamation in support of Lung Cancer Awareness Month. And I'm going to read the proclamation, and then I will ask for a motion to adopt. Lung Cancer Awareness Month proclamation, October fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer death among men and women in the United States and in Maine in two thousand and twenty-two, accounting for more deaths than colon cancer, breast cancer, and prostate cancer combined. And whereas, according to the American Cancer Society, there were an estimated one-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty new lung cancer cases and eight-hundred-and-sixty deaths in Maine because of lung cancer in two thousand and twenty-two. And whereas Maine has the sixth highest rate of new lung cancer cases in the country and the twelfth highest rate of deaths from lung cancer in the United States. And whereas radon is the second-leading cause of lung cancer in Maine, and this odorless, colorless gas may build up in homes of any age and can also be found in well water. And whereas screening for lung cancer for high-risk individuals can lead to the earlier detection of lung cancer and save lives, yet only twelve-point-four percent of high-risk Mainers are being screened. And whereas seventy-five percent of lung cancer cases in Maine are detected late and often are often not treatable. And whereas the five-year survival rate for localized lung cancer, excuse me, is fifty-nine percent, yet only seventeen percent of lung cancers are diagnosed at this stage. And whereas each year more women die from lung cancer than breast cancer, and by two-thousand-and-thirty-five, more women will die from lung cancer than men. And whereas African-Americans have the highest lung cancer incidence and mortality of all races and disparities, and lung cancer screening, diagnosis, treatment, and mortality are well-characterized among African-Americans and other racial minorities. Whereas lung cancer in never-smokers is the seventh-leading cause of cancer-related death and accounts for seventeen thousand to twenty-six thousand deaths in the U.S. every year, sixty to seventy percent of never-smokers diagnosed with lung cancer are women, and the proportion of lung cancers diagnosed in never-smokers is increasing in the U.S. Whereas organizations working in the Sanford community, such as the American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative and Women's Lung Cancer Forum, are committed to educating about lung cancer and lung cancer screening and working to increase lung cancer screening rates in Sanford. Now therefore, I, Mayor Ann Marie Mistracchio, on behalf of the Sanford City Council, do hereby proclaim November two thousand and twenty-two as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in Sanford, and recognize the need for research in lung cancer affecting women and lung cancer health disparities, and encourage all citizens to learn about lung cancer and early detection through lung cancer screening. And I know we did this early, but we did it on purpose because we really wanted people to know that we think it's important. So on behalf of the city council, the City of Sanford and Village of Springvale, I've signed this data today. So, Councillor Stackpole, we need a motion, Councillor Stackpole?
Yeah, move to approve.
Second, I mean, Councillor Brink?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, by a show of hands, that is unanimous of all those present. Thank you. Okay, twenty-two dash four-four-three dash zero one, ordered to accept funds due to criminal forfeiture pursuant to fifteen MRS A, Section five-eight-two-four-three and Section five-eight-two-six-six. Chief Anderson. We always like it when we're going to get money.
Good evening. Yes, I bring communications from the State Attorney General's office, and they would like you to decide if you would accept up to ten thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars in a criminal forfeiture. The, there's no guarantees. The case is still being litigated now, but as part of their procedure, they handle these ancillary questions first before it comes to fruition in the court. So your acceptance of this forfeiture doesn't mean we're really going to get it.
I think there's a good chance that we will.
Thank you, Chief. Do I have a motion to approve? Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second, Councillor Brink?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion by the council? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor, that is unanimous of all those present. Thank you, Chief. That was simple.
Thank you.
Okay, twenty-two dash four-six-three dash zero one, ordered to accept a proposal from Municipal Resources Incorporated for consulting services to conduct a non-union employee compensation study. Steve, you want to tell us what this is about?
I do. So I'm very pleased to present on this. The intent of the study is to conduct a classification study to include wage and class, wage and benefit market analysis based on public employees in our geographical regions. So for our union contracts, each three years when those contracts come up for renewal, our Human Resource Department gleams equivalent contracts, labor contracts throughout the region. We go through those, we create a twenty-five-year continuum of wage analysis, and we compare that particular departmental wages to those competing, that we're competing with within the region. So all of those, the majority of our entire workforce is updated every three years. For the non-union employees, that every three-year process is not in place. The wage and classification system that we have now is antiquated, it's out of date, it has not been kept up to date, and we're seeing significant wage compression. So for example, in the police department, you have sergeants and lieutenants that are compressing up against assistant chiefs and the chiefs' positions themselves. So our finance and HR department put together the request for qualifications, they put those proposals out. We received from, we received four responses back from that. There were nine firms we solicited, four, four of which responded to the solicitation. From those, that solicitation, we went through and did a scoring and analysis on each of those, and by unanimous recommendation, we, it's actually the low bid, thankful, thankfully for us. We are recommending Municipal Resources, Inc., as having the highest as far as quality and thoughtfulness of their proposals, the qualifications, the relevant experience as similar-sized public entities, their understanding of the employment-related issues faced by municipal governments, their references and credentials and/or recommendations from past clients were very strong. The cost associated with the developing, again, they were the low bid in the proposal, but I felt that they were the most complete response as far as the scope of works was concerned. And the last criteria that we looked at was the ability of the firm and the firm's subcontractors to provide the services required within the timeframe expected. So under the timeframe that's currently laid out, we expect the work product to be completed by December fifteenth. Therefore, that work product can come under consideration for the next year's fiscal budget, budgeting process. So again, the recommendation is for Municipal Resources, Inc. A copy of their response is in your packet for review. It is Carol Granfield will be the lead consultant on that. I believe her husband was a police chief here at one point in time, is that correct?
Yes.
And she's worked extensively within the area, and she's currently with Municipal Resources, Inc. out of New Hampshire.
Steve, is there an amount that should be included in this motion, or is it sixteen?
No, it's seventeen, I think it's seventeen thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, so then I will read the motion again. Ordered to accept a proposal from Municipal Resources in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for consulting services to conduct a non-union employee compensation study. Do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second, Councillor Brink?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion by the council or questions?
Yeah, I have further when you're ready.
Okay. Did you have a question, or it was just you were pointing at Steve?
Yeah, I have a question.
So further on the scope, so this is, this is a very intensive study. There's a lot that will be taking place in the short period of time. So of the forty employees that would come under this, the job description for each one is going to be submitted to the consultants. They're going to go through each of those job descriptions and make sure that they're modernized, they're all up to date. Each of those employee, covered employees would be, will be issued a comprehensive survey. Your job descriptions, description says you do this. The survey will then ask you questions pertaining to your job description, and it may come out that, you know, job description says this, but there's five other things that you, that you do that are not listed in your job description, and those need to be accounted for. Each one of those job descriptions, once updated, will be then scored for what's called an internal classification system. So there'll be a number issued to that job position between zero and a thousand. So that brings the internal equity in there. So what somebody might call a treasurer's position in our organization versus a treasurer's position in our peers could be significantly different because our treasurer does five other things in there. So the internal goes to the equity as far as the number of people they're supervising, the complexity of their positions, the ramifications should they make an error in their position. So there's, there's between seven and eleven elements that are scored in there to get that internal equity. The next piece is, there'll be a compensation study done on a regional basis. The consultant will come with a starting recommendation for municipalities of similar size and complexity and operational functions as we have here. And I will bring that back to the city council. The city council will be approving and/or amending and modifying what basis of comparison, what communities you'd be looking at for your basis of comparison for regional wages. So that will give you both an internal measurement for each position and an external measurement to the market. Those two elements are brought together. This is the system that they're proposing, I'm very familiar with the system, I've worked with three different consultants on the same type of position before. It's a, it's a system that's easy to maintain going forward, no different than the system we have in place for the union positions to continually test. So therefore, based upon all of those, I highly recommend the utilization of this firm.
We have a motion and a second. Councillor Martel, you have a question?
Yes. Why don't I do a, this is, I'm on that already.
In this year's budget, there was an anticipated amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to cover this line item, and they're coming in at seventeen-five. It's arranged from the low that we're recommending of seventeen-five to a high of thirty-six thousand five hundred.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor, that is unanimous of all those present. Twenty-two dash four-four, four-six-six dash zero one, ordered to authorize the city manager to sign a service agreement with Group Dynamic Incorporated to administer our health reimbursement arrangements, HRA, and flexible spending accounts, FSA, effective January one, two thousand and twenty-three. Go ahead, Steve, if you want to just...
Yes, so there's a very good and extensive write-up in your packet. It's produced by our finance director, Ms. Champlin. So currently, under the city's well-designed health insurance program, we use the Maine Municipal Employee Health Trust as the insurer of our health product. We use the POS two hundred product primarily, some individuals also pay an additional amount for the POS C product, but attached with the POS two hundred product, it is a high-deductible plan. So the city went into this design back in two thousand and twelve, when it first started here, whereby by selecting a high-deductible plan, the city shares in that risk, right? So by sharing in that risk, there are savings to be had for both the cost of the initial plan upfront, as well as being able to build reserves to buffer any exposure that the employee has as far as the, what they call the max out-of-pocket. So under the POS two hundred plan, we have an attached health reimbursement account. The health reimbursement account is one-hundred percent funded by the employer, and is owned by the employer, and those funds stay in our account, and they roll over year to year for any of those amounts that are unused. So currently, under the POS two hundred, for example, there is a thirty-five-hundred-dollar max out-of-pocket on a family plan. We have worked our way upwards from, I think, a thirty percent starting point to now a seventy percent match on the HRA, the max out-of-pocket. So the city will expend up to seventy percent of that max out-of-pocket exposure from the HRA first, before the employee starts to carry a burden on that cost for, it doesn't cover co-pays and such under that, it covers deductibles and coinsurance for in and out-of-network. That being said, the success of that program is not only the sharing and the expense and the design of the program, but it has to be implementable. So it has to be user-friendly, otherwise the employees can't utilize the benefit that's been assigned for them, for their benefit. And currently, WageWorks, which is our current administrator under the HRA, they have failed us significantly, and I say that strongly. So we went to legal counsel, and legal counsel agreed that we could release them for cause for their failure to appropriately administer our accounts. So when we first started with them, they had a debit card system that worked for both the HRA and a flexible spending account, an FSA that's owned by the employee. It did appropriate separation between those two accounts, and you could swipe your debit card, and life, life was good. That debit card has not worked now for over a year, right? So the employees have had to rely on an app that is less than amenable as far as functionality. It is difficult to perfect. The solution to this was researched by HR and finance, they identified Group Dynamic. Group Dynamic is already coupled with our Maine Municipal Employee Health Trust, and they have a seamless system. So if you have a claim, if I went to the emergency room, was ultimately hospitalized and such, there's going to be deductibles and coinsurance to be paid there for anything that our benefit under the HRA calls out for, it's billed directly, right? And then the employee is reimbursed on that. So there's, there's no, this is a seamless system. So that's what we've been seeking, that's what we had at one point in time, we don't have at this point in time. But, so our recommendation is to go with Group Dynamic to ensure that this system that has saved both the employer and the employees' significant funds over the year stays intact and works well for both entities, so that we can continue to save money.
Thank you, Steve. I need a motion, please. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'll make a motion that we approve the service agreement with Group Dynamic.
Is there a second, Councillor Brink?
Second.
A motion and a second. A motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, all those in favor, by a show of hands? That is unanimous of all those present. Twenty-two dash four six one dash zero one, ordered to accept a bid proposal from the Beta Group of Manchester, New Hampshire to update the city's twenty sixteen, twenty-seventeen pavement management conditions inventory through field inspection, analyses, and cost projections, being a significant capital planning tool for both the maintenance and revitalization of the city's infrastructure. Steve, is Matt gonna...
I'm gonna stop talking at this point, turn this over to Director Matt Hill from our Public Works Department. So Matt?
I see him up there.
Good evening, thank you. The Department of Public Works solicited three proposals to update the pavement conditions index that you mentioned. The study was last performed by the Beta Group in two thousand and sixteen and has since helped steadily guide the city to make informed decisions on roadway capital investments. The DPW received the following results. The Beta Group of Manchester, New Hampshire, which include the re-survey of the city streets, including cost analyses and ArcGIS platform, this time which will be online. This also includes the cost extrapolation and dynamic capital strategy where we can tailor our investment to see what results are projected. Fifty-six thousand three hundred. Public Works One of Logan, Utah, this is the same company that we currently have our Public Works Management Software through. They do the roadway inventory and assessment. They recommend treatments, but they basically only give a snapshot. It's not a dynamic system until you basically have to redo things. So that came in a little bit lower at thirty-seven five hundred, thirty-seven thousand five hundred. And then Street Scan of Wakefield, Massachusetts, they have an automated asset management program where they come and do LiDAR on the streets and roads. They collect numerous assets, including not only the roadway condition, but sidewalks, paint markings, curb signs, catch bases, trees. They can detect ADA compliance, streetlights, have a citizen engagement app as well, and then they also deploy a software module that has annual fees and data hosting. So all those combined are ninety-five thousand two hundred and eleven dollars plus two thousand seven hundred and fifty a year. So it's really kind of a broad range of services here. I'd love to say someday, when we have the roads in much better shape, that we could kind of go for the cats me out of the Street Scan, but I think the department would really benefit from a consistent approach, going back with the Beta Group again, get an apples-to-apples approach of where we have been, where we are now, and provide us a good direction on where we're going again in the future. So in review of the alternatives and recognition of these priorities of the department, we again recommend the Beta Group. The project will benefit by having the existing framework in place from the original pavement conditions study, and this time we'll be receiving a web-based deliverable that should be more user-friendly than the previous access database. This construction planning and scoping effort is essential to the roadway maintenance and reconstruction process, as it is to perform the actual work itself. It's therefore naturally well-suited to be funded by the roadway capital improvement program, as all engineering design is, as it is now. So I know that the council has been discussing the raise grant opportunity and the funds that will open up in, most notably in twenty-five and twenty-six, and we want to make sure that we have a good assessment of where we're at and how we'd like to go about investing and improving the city at that point.
Thank you, Matt. And just to be clear, that is, the bid proposal is for fifty-six thousand three hundred dollars from the Beta Group, correct?
Correct.
So I'm just going to include that in the motion. Do I have a motion to approve? Deputy Mayor Hurlhey?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid.
Councilor Martel?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Councilor Termath, you have a question?
How do you think, Madam Mayor? Matt, is this system from the Beta Group, is this going to be accessible, the results to the public by chance?
So, that's a very good question. Basically, the results that they project, there are certain parts of it that are very good for public knowledge. Most notably, last time around, they looked at like, how far was the city behind? How many millions of dollars are we behind in capital investment? And then what is the targeted annual investment in order to get our pavement conditions index to, I think City Manager Buck wanted an eighty or eighty-five based on past experience where there was a notable improvement in the roads. So we felt like that was a very good thing to publicly disclose. They also basically generated a priorities list based on their cost-benefit value analysis. And that looked at not only the condition of the road, but the proposed treatment of the road, how many people traveled on the road, how many people lived on the road, and the cost of the associated repair. And that one at the time, and I briefed the council and even the planning board on this, is actually like quite politically charged, because you could have a road that's actually in really good shape, maybe it's just got a couple cracks on it, and is actually like very cost-effective to maintain, maybe crack seal, which at the time when we did the previous analysis, was about seven thousand dollars a mile. And then the next block over, you could have a street that needed full reconstruction, and at the time, that was about a million dollars a mile instead of seven thousand dollars a mile. And that cost now is somewhere between, for full reconstruction, depending on sidewalks and utility involvement, is somewhere between three to eight million a mile instead of one million. So the discussion, the very difficult discussion that has to be had with residents is, you know, they're wondering why the next street over, which is in pretty good shape, is getting a crack seal at seven thousand a mile, when their street, which it might be in terrible shape, is not getting any treatment at all, because they're at now three to eight million a mile. So basically, what I'm getting to is that that list, that cost-benefit priorities list, was a tool that we used in order to try to get a strategy on ordering the reconstruction efforts and the maintenance efforts on roads. But it was not a be-all, end-all list. It did not mean, because your score was a thirty-five and the next street was a thirty-four, the thirty-five always went first. It was more of, you know, an analytical, you know, discussion on what are the merits of each street and road in order. And sometimes those came down to decimals. And if I showed you that list today, you'd see like the top eight roads that were on the list, we've done. But we've also kind of gone off that list because we had to, with the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty bond, we had to invest in roads that were outside the city core due to utility involvement. We've also made targeted investments to the city core based on, you know, ancillary improvements around the downtown that we expect to help benefit the downtown as part of that raise grant investment. So I've got some, I don't mind making that public information, and, you know, everything I deal with, that's not, you know, HR-related or HIPAA-related, is public information. But, you know, I would definitely look back to the city manager and the council before, you know, publishing a list of here's the roads we're going to do in order, because based on prices, based on condition of that road, and based on, you know, political opinion, that sometimes can change very quickly. And that's very tough, if I publish a list, here's the order, and then next month, all of a sudden I've changed the order, and there's a lot of questions to be answered.
Thank you, Matt. And I'll just say that any list, when that report is finished, it is going to be presented to the council at a public meeting and accepted by the council. So yes, it will be public. That's the answer.
That's a much more concise answer, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I get what you're saying, but it will be public, and yes, it will be available. So, yes. We have a motion and a second. Is there, oh, that's right, Councilor Stackpole have a question?
Just a quick comment. I was looking through the printouts, the scans of the app, and one of the things that sticks out to me is the citizen engagement part of it, which I think people will enjoy. And it says here that this empowers your residents to submit service requests while enabling you to easily monitor the submissions. So this will make it really easy for people. I would think this is an app, I've seen pictures of it on people's phones. When you see something that's in need of repair on your street, it's a quick and easy way to submit, basically a public work order that you guys can take a look at and get some work done. I would think the people would really like having that, that ability to do that thing.
Thank you. Steve, did you have something you wanted to add?
So I just wanted to lend my further support to the Beta Group bid from the perspective that we're familiar with the system. I marvel at the department's ability to take, you know, the extensive list of roads that we have and be able to currently work on continuous amendment of our capital improvements program by utilizing this as the basis, the foundational tool for the costing, as well as the cost of benefit analysis. It was a major component of being able to design around, you know, if we got a raise, if we got the raise grant or did not get the raise grant, this was the tool that allowed for that flexibility to be able to present. And hopefully, Director Hill will be able to show us much more of that when we present on October twenty-fifth at the workshop. Thank you.
Any other discussion or comments? Then I will ask for a vote, all those in favor of the motion, by a show of hands. Motion passes. Is unanimous by all those present. Okay, now we're going to go on to the meat of this evening, and it is seven twenty-five, and I think we will be able to get through all of this. So, twenty-two dash four four five dash zero one, this is a hearing to determine whether eighty-eight Lebanon Street, identified as Tax Map M twenty-eight, Lot thirty-six, and further described in a deed recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds at Book one six zero nine nine, page six seven five, and mortgage recorded at Book one six zero nine nine, page six seven seven, and then now deed at Book one nine one one four, page two fifty-one, is a dangerous building or a nuisance within the meaning of seventeen MRSA Sections twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine, and to determine what, if any, remedy is appropriate. I will open the hearing now, and I will ask Ian Housey, Community Development Director, to present on the behalf of the city, and then I'm sure there'll be other parties to the hearing that will be asked for presenting testimony or information, and the council will hear that information. And if there, and the council can ask clarifying questions of the participants, but other than that, we will have our discussion at the next agenda item. Ian, floor is yours.
So just in layman's terms, these are dangerous building hearings. We've got five of them scheduled tonight. That's a lot. We typically do three, if not four. We had four scheduled, we added an additional one. The four that we'll first start with are really abandoned building cases. These are typical, they're without people, without occupants inside, and the last one is Eight York Street that we'll take on last, that is occupied. Just to talk a little bit about the process from here, after the dangerous building hearing, well, with the dangerous building hearing, I'll present the city's case. I've asked Aaron Letterer, our code enforcement officer, who's been handling a lot of these abandoned, all the abandoned buildings and a number of these code enforcement issues, to attend remotely. So he'll be speaking along the way, I'll ask for his concurrence as to what's presented. And additionally, the parties in interest, so that would either be the owner or somebody who has some claim to the property as a party in interest, whether it be a mortgagee or some other claim, is whether legal counsel can speak as to why the property would not be dangerous. It's not a public hearing, it's very clear, it is just a hearing, it's regarding the dangerousness, but it is at the city's council's discretion as to whether or not they allow members of the public to speak. Maybe they're a neighbor, but it sometimes is advisable not to allow that and to listen to the facts that are presented. And what will be asked is to establish the facts with the city council. The city council agenda is laid out in three agenda items per order. First is the hearing, second is the establishment of the facts and determination or the judgment what must occur. And then finally, to save time, we take up all the orders under one order. It's a standard order, we've been using this order now five years. It's not something to be afraid of, if you're going to be a judge dangerous. In this case, you know, in these cases, you might have bought a dangerous building, or you might be a new owner to these dangerous buildings. And really, it's the way that the city holds your feet to the fire. It talks about how you can get what's called a rehabilitation plan. Within this order, the city council is delegating that authority for the issuance of a rehabilitation plan, or the abatement of the nuisance over to the city manager. And that rehabilitation plan that you'll need to submit must be submitted within thirty days, and also it must demonstrate the ability and willingness to rehabilitate the building. And what we're talking about with rehabilitating the building is nothing particularly special. It's what all other buildings need to be, to be able to be habitable. You need to make that building habitable. And it needs to be to the satisfaction of the city manager and to the satisfaction of the code enforcement officer for what constitutes a habitable building and an appropriate and safe place to live. That's not unusual, that's anything that anybody might live in. We want to avoid the situation where someone might be buying sight unseen a property that has major deficiencies, where someone just smeared some paint on it and called it good and put it on the market. And what they're buying is a lemon, and they have no opportunity to return that lemon because they've invested all their savings in that. So this is a way that the city council and the city of Sanford protects your assets, protects the asset for that future buyer, it also protects the asset for the city as a whole. So we take a couple steps here as well, so this isn't the end of this process for if the property is determined dangerous tonight. At the next city council meeting, you'll do a confirmation of the dangerous building order you're doing this, doing, if you do it. And the purpose of that is just to firm up what the facts are. If there's any disagreement, we can have a discussion about that. We learned this during the pandemic, this was a way to reaffirm what was established, and if there was any discrepancies, we could fix those at the time. And after that, the findings in order will be delivered, and after that, you have that time to submit that rehabilitation plan that's been proposed. So I've got material up for you tonight. The first building that we're going to tackle is this eighty-eight Lebanon Street. The material is organized in your material with the basic hearing notice, ownership documents, so trying to establish who owns the building, process and service, so how did someone know that this hearing was taking place, and how did we get that to them? And then as well, the city's correspondences. And then I also include in the packet a number of pictures. I try to run through the pictures first to give you a sense of what the property is that we're talking about, so I'll do that first, and I can hop back and forth and refer those to you, they're also in the published material. So the first one, eighty-eight Lebanon Street, this is a picture from the front door. I wanted to point out that you can see a notice on the exterior that this is an order to vacate. I'll get back to you with, that's in your packet about when the, I'm just waiting for the material to be available. There we go, thank you, Ben. So there's an order to vacate on the front door, there's also an order to vacate on the side door. These are some of the windows situations, actually, there's a fine haze of mildew and things on the interior as well. These are pictures from the perimeter, there's some moss and things growing on the roof, but it does look intact. There is a meter on the side of the building, and you can see the second order to vacate on the other side, and then just the edges of a vehicle. Through the window, you can see that this property was vandalized. Someone had gained entrance to this and wrote on the wall, I'll show you the police reports as well, that will give us an approximate timeframe of when that occurred. And then generally, it looks as if the property is moving towards a state of reoccupancy, a lot of the junk that was here previously is now removed, so it looks like it's well on its way. That's good. Here's a close-up of the side door, and then working on the back door. So you'll see a difference between the city's correspondences and notices of violations about the state of the deck and boarding of windows. There is some markings on the windows and just general still overgrowth. There is an abandoned vehicle... There is an abandoned vehicle or inoperable motor vehicle in the driveway. This is the VIN number for that vehicle. It was still there as of 4:30 this afternoon. A garage, seen some damage and some boarding of that, of that garage. So with this process, the question is whether or not the property is dangerous. Primarily tonight, we're talking about its state of abandonment. The questions are, is it unsafe, structurally unstable, unsanitary, a fire hazard, unsuitable to how it is used or occupied, and improper to how it is used or occupied? Is it a hazard to health and safety because of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, obsolescence, or abandonment? And is it dangerous to life and property? So to start walking through this, 88 Lebanon Street is almost the corner of Middle and Lebanon Street. It's highlighted on this image. According to the tax records, it was owned at the time that we started processing this, owned by the heirs of Lisa, Lisa Cushman. She purchased it in 2011. This was-
Ian, I think that was Cushing.
Cushing? Sorry if I said Cushman. Thank you. Cushing. And this is the deed that was associated with that. There was a mortgage. That mortgage was assigned twice. It went into foreclosure. And then after foreclosure, it was sold from Lakeview Loan Servicing to, to Frichette Holdings LLC. So as far as the process and service goes on this, as I'll explain, this is the notice that was filed in the registry of deeds. These are the certified mailings that went to the parties in interest that are listed on the notice of hearing. It was also advertised in the newspaper because it was an heirs of. That has to be done for three successive weeks. I did get a response from Lakeview Loan Servicing. They said, what do we have to do here? And we had a discussion about what a rehab plan might entail and what actions they should take. And one of those actions was that they should, as, as their mortgagee, that they should move the property on and, and resell that. Apparently, they immediately did take that advice, and they sold it to Frichette Holdings. So that, that deed, if you look at the date of 9/16, was after the notice of hearing. So it's showing that the process works. This is precipitating the transfer of that property, and we have a new owner, and we'd like to see that that owner is willing to take the steps to rehabilitate the building and move it back into a habitable state and improve that property. So I hope that that goes smoothly, as I hope we can discuss further tonight with the owner. I hope that the owner will speak when they have an opportunity to talk about what they will do to the property to make it habitable again. Aaron Letterer sent out these notices of violation. I'm going to forward down to the photographs here. This was back in 2019. The property was ordered vacated. There were squatters living in the property according to the notice of violation, and also mentioned the unregistered vehicle. This is the order to vacate that was also posted on the side of the building. And, and then additionally, in 2022, another notice was issued, and I'm just looking for the pictures right now. So you can see at this time in May of 2022, the building is fully boarded. You've got issues related to the steps, trash all over the yard. There's the vehicle still in place, issues with the fence, issues with the deck, and just general issues. Am I forgetting anything with regard to this, Aaron?
Nope. So the rear deck, there was a lot of issues, handrails. There was gutters hanging down. They've seen pretty much all the photos that show the condition of the property fairly well in the notice of violation and all the violations that we listed.
Thank you. There is a meter at that time as well. And here's a picture of before Aaron put the order to vacate on the side of the building. So in this case, there, there's been no water service to the building since February 2019. Actually, I've got a good report here, pretty extensive. The water's off. It has been since February 5th, 2019. There's $102.22 balance. There's a sewer balance of zero. The property taxes for 2022, the first installment is overdue at this point. There is an electrical meter present. The vacant building license expires with the prior owner, so the new owner has to obtain a vacant building license within 90 days. The occupancy permit has expired, so it does need to be brought up to a habitable stand, habitable, habitable state at this point. And currently, there are no construction permits active, but we hope to see some of that in the future. And then this is the police report talking about, I think I noticed a reference to homeless, trespassing, trespassing, multiple instances of trespassing on the building, in the building in 2020. And then, and that, that was the instance of why that was critical at that time. There are doors and windows damaged and boarded, indicating abandonment, vandalism evidence. There's absence of personal property, so those are all indications of a state of abandonment, and including the abandoned vehicle in the driveway. There's deterioration. If I hop back to the, the photo, I, I hope that, I hope, I, we would like to see that the roof is, roof membrane fixed. It's, as Aaron wrote in his notice of violation, that the, the roof membrane was blowing around. So it's, it's blown in different places. Decks and stairs and plants are overgrown. There have been notice of violation for abandonment in 2019, and it's unfit for human occupancy. And then the, just to reiterate, the, the orders to vacate and the, the violations. Aaron, do you want to state any of those violations that stick out to you?
So the property has had issues with debris and trash and the abandoned vehicle. I have talked with the maintenance company that was hired by the bank to get various items fixed. Nothing has really been done except all the trash and debris stuck inside of the garage. Perhaps that's changed in the last couple of months with the new owner. But again, there's a lot of miscellaneous damage all over the property and pretty much every side of the property. There's, there's issues that need to be corrected, as well as the interior, as those pictures through the windows showed. So hopefully, the, the new owner has already started to correct those issues, and it would be great to have this long-standing vacant building with this abandoned vehicle and debris finally remediated with the proper permits.
Thank you, Aaron. And then, and then finally, also, the, Aaron has sent out a letter demanding of the prior owner. It hasn't reached the new owner yet, but as of September 7th, effectively what we're talking about, but this is an administrative version of what your statement of intent is. So when do you expect to make the repairs? When do you, when are you going to set the date of sale or foreclosure? And when do you expect the building to be reoccupied? So again, the purpose is to bring this property back into habitable use, protect future occupants, and, and also not detract from the welfare of Sanford. And then also that we'd expect, you know, the roof to be fixed, that, you know, plumbing would be verified, that it's functional, electrical be plumbing, that it, that it be verified, making sure that other things, everything else related to habitability is, is, is covered there. We for this building could be reoccupied in the form of a rehabilitation plan.
Thank you, Ian. Before we go on to the, the other party, can we ask questions of you now?
Sure.
Clarification. I have one. Has the new owner, and that was since September 16th, is that the date that it was, or in that area, middle of September, when it changed hands, have any permits been pulled?
No, no permits have been pulled.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else have any questions of Ian before we listen to the other party? I don't see any hands, so let's, is there any, who's here to speak for the owner of 88 Lebanon Street? Just come up to the mic and, and tell us who you are.
This is Bob Frichette. I'm the new owner of the property.
Welcome.
We've already cleaned it all. It was really bad in there, so we cleaned everything out. The garage is cleaned out. It's, we'll have the floors redone, repainted inside. New roof will be going on. We'll fix the back deck. I already have it sold, purchase and sale agreement to be sold in November. So we'll have it all fixed up and done by then.
But you do understand what we're, why we're here today, though, because, because it was-
It was bad. It-
And it needs to go, to get an occupancy permit.
Not a problem.
You understand what it'll have to go through?
I do.
And that's part of this process?
Sure.
And I, and our whole goal was to get it back into-
Yeah, it will be. I want it, I want it sold.
Into housing, right. Not to abandon it. Because it's been, literally, this was just moved on by the land bank after trying to work with the mortgage company. So maybe this was a good thing that we started. So put it on the market.
I bought it at foreclosure sale four months ago. It just now closed. So I think it was before some of this took place, but-
But you understand what, what will have to happen with a rehab plan and-
I do.
Yeah, okay, great. Glad to hear it. Anything, anyone else that wants to speak, or are you just pretty much, go ahead?
Hello. My name is Kylie Gorman. I'm an attorney from Mendat McHugh. And while I am not technically here representing my client that sold 88 Lebanon, I would like to make a statement regarding the fact that, yes, I'm actually the one who sold it at the foreclosure auction four months ago. There have been massive delays ever since COVID regarding the closings, and I do want to stress, it is not the buyer's fault, the fact that we didn't close until September. It just, that's how it's been lately, which is super unfortunate. And I do agree with you guys that, and I have a great relationship with Ian. We've worked really closely together for a lot of properties at this point, that these dangerous building hearings are important and do light a fire under my clients and under my firm, so we can mitigate these issues. But I do want to say, in my own opinion, I do not think 88 Lebanon should be considered a dangerous building at this time, only because the issues aren't so structurally terrible as I've seen personally, and I'm sure Ian's seen much worse as well and much better. But knowing that Mr. Frichette is handling this and planning to sell it again in November, once getting the proper permitting, I think deeming it a dangerous building will only stop that and will only hinder that further for him as further hoops. And then he has to tell his new buyer, this was dedicated as a dangerous building. And when I'm in auction, I actually usually do big red disclaimers, this is a dangerous building, just so you know, this is what's going to happen. I am afraid that this, if, if this is deemed dangerous, that it's going to hinder occupancy even further. And like I said, I'm not here technically representing my client. I just have detailed knowledge about this. And like I said, I'm the one who actually sold it. So that, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Ian, did you have anything that you wanted to add? Is there anyone else that wants to speak about this property that's, that's involved?
We'll move fast.
Okay.
So I'd, I'd mention that we're going to do a confirmation hearing of this next, if, if that's your finding tonight as to whether it's dangerous, and we can issue a rehabilitation plan immediately. I think the issue is that, as far as selling this property, it's, it's, has to do with construction scheduling, like it needs a new roof. So I think that's going to be the limitation that's going to come up on this. As far as the determination of abandonment, excuse me, as far as the determination of dangerous, we, you know, on the rehabilitation plan, the last line talks about how to remove it from a dangerous status, and that's really, once you complete the work, you request that, that the dangerous designation be removed. And it's very simple, and it's an affidavit. We did one this week, and we do them regularly and forevermore. That determination is, is a closed matter. It's nice to have the, the matter, once it's open, to be closed.
Thank you. Ian, just, can you just, because I know that this is an issue. There are times when we've had complaints because of follow-through, when we didn't declare a, a, a building or, and making, and we've had complaints from those owners who bought that property. So can you just clarify how this will make sure that this, this designation will ensure that whoever buys that property will be assured that it was inspected, permitted, everything was done properly?
Yes, I can. So I think, so as, as you mentioned, so the, the notice of hearing that's in here right now is filed in the registry of deeds. The findings in order that you, that you may do your dangerous building here is also filed in the registry of deeds. So if you're a prospective buyer, and you're coming with intention to buy a property with a mortgage, you're going to conduct a title search. We have had one instance, and I think it's only once, one instance that I know of, where someone bought a property with cash without doing a title search. The property had had rehabilitation issued, but that rehabilitation plan was never followed through. They were left with issues of plumbing. The, the contractor and the owner had run plumbing pipe outside the building to attach a shower. And they had bought this property, and they're wondering what had happened to it. And my first question was, well, did you see the notice in the registry of deeds that would have come up with your title search? And their response was, I didn't do a title search. So that, that's, that's the way that you'll find out that, that's in here, and it really is protecting the owner, because you'll see that it's flagged. You'll see that it was an abandoned property. And it's something, as for a prospective owner, it's important to look at, right? When you look at a property, contact the sewer department. Find out what your sewer pipe is made of. You know, contact the code enforcement officer, code enforcement. Find out whether there's a fire in that building, or find out whether or not there was a determination of abandonment. So your, your due diligence. So those are the steps that you can take as a prospective buyer to find out some of the easy things as to what you're taking on.
Thank you, Ian. Any other questions by the council for people that, go ahead, Councilor Turmatt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Real quick question, Ian. So how, how many years has this, this been like, this property, 88 Lebanon Street? How long has it been in this, this type of disrepair?
Well, this property's only been vacant for, for three years. So that's the time that the water's been turned off. It, it is, it could be longer than that. Aaron, do you, do you know how long this property has had a vacant building license for?
I believe that one was, I, I don't know off the top of my head.
In this case, this property, you know, three years, that's, that's a long time for a building. I, I was thinking about it in preparation for this. I, you know, our ordinance says anything that's over 90 days is in, it requires a vacant building license, and I think that's a pretty good determinant. I don't know how long a building will survive a main winter without water and sewer. I think about plumbing traps. You know, if those are, just have water, someone walked away, that those are all going to get busted immediately. It's regular seeing just toilets that are busted. You know, sometimes people might preserve them by putting, you know, antifreeze in those, but that stuff does dry up a little bit more. And some of these that you're going to hear about tonight have been frankly far longer and have far more of issues.
Councilor Martel?
So it sounds like this is a property that's being worked on to remedy the issues. How much of a delay is this going to be to have this go through this whole process? Or should it be pretty, pretty parallel to all the- Or should it be pretty, pretty parallel to all the other work that's going on?
I think the answer is none. It's going to have no delay.
Okay.
Anyone else? Any other questions?
I think the answer, though, is, you know, it's a question of easy. You know, if it's easy enough, and I'm not speaking to this property, but if it's easy enough that it's just a coat of paint, that's different than, you know, making sure that it's a habitable place to sell to someone.
Okay, then seeing no other hands or people that have questions, I will declare the hearing closed. And I'll go to the next, to the item 22-446-01. Based on the testimony and other evidence presented at the hearing pursuant to 17 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859 regarding 88 Lebanon Street, what does the city council find are the facts and what does the city council adjudge? Based on the testimony of those present and other evidence presented and made part of the record, the Sanford City Council hereby attest to the testimony and evidence and hereby finds the following facts. A, the building, the property, was abandoned as defined in 30A MRSA Section 3106B and City Code Section 149-6.3 by the prior owner. And as evidenced by, no water service to the building since February 2019 and no habitable occupancy since that time. Doors and windows are damaged and boarded indicating abandonment. There is evidence of vandalism on the interior of the property, and police reports indicate trespassing in 2020. Personal property and furnishings are absent from the property. Any remaining personal property is damaged or unusable and generally describable as junk debris, household trash, and possibly hazardous, and is a fire hazard and is unsanitary. There is an abandoned vehicle parked in the driveway. The property has deteriorated, including roof membrane, decks, and exterior stairs, and plants are overgrown. The property was noticed for violations for abandonment and posted against occupancy on September 6th, 2019. The property was deemed unfit for occupancy until deemed habitable by the code enforcement officer. C, the most recent inspection on May 5th, 2022, found violations of City Code Section 90-13B5, 2015 International Property Maintenance Code as adopted by reference. Inoperative motor vehicle indicating property abandonment, lack of functional electrical and plumbing system is inappropriate for occupancy, general abandonment and neglect. Roof shingles have blown off the roof. Exterior of the property is unsanitary. Damaged guardrails cannot support loads. Building exterior in poor repair. Trash, rubbish, rubbish and garbage on property, overgrown vegetation, gates are in poor condition. D, the code enforcement officer demanded a statement of intent pursuant to the vacant building license requirement, including expected dates of repair, work, maintenance, expected dates of sale or foreclosure, and when the building will be reoccupied pursuant to City Code 1, Section 149-6.96 on September 7th, 2022. There was no direct response to the demand letter. The vacant building license has expired, and a new owner must obtain a vacant, vacant building license within 90 days of purchasing the property. E, property taxes and water service have amounts owing as of September 21st, 2022, indicating inadequate maintenance. F, the property is uninhabitable and may not be occupied. Based on the foregoing findings, the municipal officers adjudged that the property is a dangerous building and nuisance because the building is unsanitary due to the length of time it has been vacant, without climate control, and also vandalism during that time. Constitutes a hazard to health or safety because of inadequate maintenance since 2019. An abandonment by the prior owner, property is a public nuisance and must be abated or satisfactorily rehabilitated. Any abandoned and vacant building that sits for more than 90 days without climate control, supplied water, electrical services, or constant maintenance, and of sewer air gaps has deteriorated, is inadequately maintained, and is unsanitary enough to be uninhabitable. Uninhabitable buildings are a hazard to any future occupants' health and safety, a blight to the neighborhood, and unless abated or satisfactorily rehabilitated, will continue to be a public nuisance and detract from the welfare of Sanford. Could I have a motion to approve? Council Brink?
So moved.
Is there a second? Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Discussion by the council. I'll just start by saying that this was, has been on the radar of the land bank authority, and we decided to move it forward. And we think, even in light of the fact that it was recently purchased, very recently, no permits have been pulled, and we think that we need to follow through with this, so. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I concur with your thoughts. I think we have had situations where we've had great people sitting in the audience. We've still declared a dangerous and hazardous, and I don't think there's been any, I've talked to some sense, there was nothing significantly, no significant issues with the process forward. And I also think this helps prevent just the lip-sticking of the property, which is basically, let's, you know, paint it, finish the floors, but you actually take care of some of the major systems. A lot of people tend to, you know, ignore the roof and the furnace in order to finish the wood floors. And I think this, this process actually helps prevent that and make sure that a property that has been vacant this long is adequately rehabbed for the next person. So I, you seem like you're going to do a great job, and I hope you do. I don't think this problem will slow you down. I don't think this declaration will slow you down. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by the council? Councilor Termath?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, absolutely. My thoughts, I concur along with my colleagues here. And also, I'm very encouraged to, you know, have the new owner here today, you know, to, to, you know, speak, you know, for the property and moving, moving the property forward. So, so I just want to thank you for coming forward and for being here at this hearing and speaking on the property. So thank you. And of course, you know, the length of time that, you know, probate and mortgage companies hold you up, so understandable on that. So thank you again.
You have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, then I will call the vote. All those in favor, by a show of hands, motion passes unanimously of all those present. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frichette.
Mr. Frichette, you can contact me tomorrow to request a rehab plan, okay?
23 Rankin Street. 22-447-01. This is a hearing to determine whether 23 Rankin Street identified as tax map R5A Lot 18 and further described in a deed recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds at Book 2993, Page 185, and mortgage recorded at Book 14150, Page 856, is a dangerous building or a nuisance within the meaning of 17 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859, and to determine what, if any, remedy is appropriate. I will declare the hearing open. Ian, you can present for the city.
Thank you. So it is 23 Rankin Street. These should go a little bit faster here. I'm going to start off with the, with the utility report for you. The water on this property has been off since May 8th, 2012. So we're really talking more than 10 years at this point. There's still an $87 balance on the water. And taxes, there's a 2020 tax lien, a 2021 tax lien, and the 2022 taxes are overdue. There's no electrical meter. It's never obtained a vacant building license. The occupancy permit has clearly expired, and there are no construction permits. These are the pictures from this building. There's a lot of leaves, leaves accumulated, a lot of plant overgrowth. Variety of things. I'm, I think these pictures speak for themselves on this. There's some personal items coming out from underneath the garage here. There's, right where this picture is taken, there's quite a stench as well. So we're not going inside that garage at this point. There's debris generally around the property. This is the way the backside of the building looks. It's open. That's an open window there. And through the window, you can see this, as well as this going into the garage. This, right here, is the basement access. That's completely covered with leaves. There's other openings that are boarded. There's also a shed. This is the image into the, what's inside the shed. An old oil tank, overgrown, overgrowth around the meter connection. Other personal items with inside, and this is how the property looks from the street. The, the, it's on Rankin Street. This is the tax card shown to be owned by the heirs of Mildred Hill. I have been contacted by heirs of to inquire about the property and, and how to gain ownership. I've referred them to legal counsel, and, but they're, they're not known to be owners in this case, and I have no contact information other than an email address. This is the deed. This is the, the mortgage, and it's assigned to US Bank. I believe Ms. Germain will be speaking to this property as well tonight. This is the notices filed. These are the certified mailings that went to the known parties of interest and is well advertised in the newspaper for three successive weeks, so that people are fully notified. These are the notices of violation that Erin has provided since 2020 and 2021, and then also on 2022. And there are no police reports. There's actually no records regarding any police activity on this property. It is abandoned, obviously. I have serious questions as to what this building will, will actually yield. I'm questioning as to whether it could actually be rehabilitated. But I've not been inside, and I don't really know. And it's, it is unsecure. There's, personal property is junk. It smells. The electrical meters are absent. It's, I put up the notes of violations for you, and those are all listed as well for the record. And I mentioned the property taxes, and it's uninhabitable and may not be occupied until deemed otherwise. Erin, am I forgetting anything as far as things to mention on Rankin Street?
No, there's been zero communication from the mortgage holders regarding taking care of the property. Usually when these go into foreclosure, as the stickers on the door would suggest, they're safeguard properties, as well as, I believe, MCS properties. At one point, winterized the home, but did not do any other maintenance that they sometimes usually do, such as lawn care, cleaning out the property. So it's truly been abandoned. There's been no activity. And neighbors complain quite often regarding the property. Some of them go over and take care of the, what they can, what's reasonable to them, I guess. So hopefully, this will start some kind of reaction to get this property either rehabilitated or whatever other steps are deemed necessary by the council.
It's unfortunate for how long this has sat vacant. This is a modern foundation. It's probably reinforced concrete. It appears to have a full basement, but I don't really know what's going on with the structure.
So is there the other party here to speak?
Possibly.
Come on up.
Hello again, once more. My name is Kylie Germain. I'm an attorney from Bendet McHugh, and I represent Rushmore Loan Servicing, which is the servicer for the investor, for the mortgage holder of this loan. I actually, funny enough, despite my speaking to you last time, I never really am upset with you guys declaring these properties as dangerous, because they are. They, they really are, and this has been abandoned since 2012, because that is when Ms. Hill passed on. I, myself, actually went through probate court for her in order to determine the heirs of her estate so that they can handle the foreclosure appropriately. And we have recently, once again, I am currently going through a deed and lieu process with the heirs of Mildred Hill. So we do not have to go forward with the foreclosure and, you know, further hinder that for years, quite literally years, because that's how long foreclosures can take. So now we are going to do a deed and lieu. It was actually just drafted recently. I have to clear those tax liens, actually, as well as some other boring legal stuff before I can officiate that. But once we get the deed and lieu recorded and finished, my client will then feel comfortable to remediate these issues that were brought forward in this hearing and have full intentions to, to at least mitigate it, secure it, because we do recognize it is currently unsecured, and no one likes that. I do not know the property company currently that's handling it. It changes with every servicer. It changes with every week, sometimes, truthfully, which I know is unfortunate, but it kind of, it is what it is. I have no play in that. If I did, this would be a different conversation. I don't know if the building can be saved either. That's not really up to us. But I do want to say that we are involved now, thankfully, because of this dangerous building hearing. And we are going through the loss mitigation through the deed and lieu, so action will, will take place in this.
Thank you. Ian, did you have anything else you wanted to present, or do we have, can I go to questions from the council?
I was just going to have a comment to that, was, I would, I would expect that the vacant building license fees would be paid too in that process. And just the alternative to the mortgagee is do nothing.
Thank you. Questions or comments, or, well, comments will come later, but questions, if you have questions of Ian or the attorney? No?
I've got to say, having her here and having her make these two statements has been great.
Very helpful.
Thank you so much for coming. It actually kind of is insight into some of the processes you're going through. Thank you.
So then I will declare the hearing closed. Go on to the next agenda item. 22-448-01. Based on the testimony and other evidence presented at the hearing pursuant to 17 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859 regarding 23 Rankin Street, what does the city council find are the facts and what does the city council adjudge? Based on the testimony of those present and other evidence presented and made part of the record, the Sanford City Council hereby attest to the testimony and evidence and hereby finds the following facts. A, the building, the property, is abandoned as defined in 30A MRSA Section 3106B and City Code Section 149-6.3, and as evidenced by, no water service to the building since May 2012 and no habitable occupancy since that time. The building is unsecure, and doors and windows are damaged, boarded, and absent, indicating abandonment. Personal property and furnishings are absent from the property, and any remaining personal property is damaged or unusable and generally describable as junk debris, household trash, and possibly hazardous, and is a fire hazard and is unsanitary. Electrical meters are absent from the property, and the service entrance overgrown with vegetation. The property has deteriorated, including siding, exterior stairs, and basement access. Vegetation is overgrown and property unmaintained. B, the property was noticed for violations for abandonment pursuant to City Code Section 149-6.5, failure to license vacant building in 2020, 2021, and 2022, a license is required. C, the most recent inspection on March 29th, 2022, found violations of City Code Section 90-13B5, 2015 International Property Maintenance Code as adopted by reference. Inadequate maintenance, water, and plumbing systems. Property unsecure and attractive nu, and an attractive nuisance. Exterior of structure unmaintained, trash and garbage on exterior and interior. Stairs and decks are rotting and unmaintained. Loose wires hang loose and exposed. D, property taxes and water service have amounts owing as of September 21st, 2022, indicating inadequate maintenance and abandonment. E, the property is uninhabitable and may not be occupied. Based on the foregoing findings, the municipal officers adjudged that the property is a dangerous building and nuisance because the building is unsanitary due to the length of time the building has been vacant and without climate control. The property constitutes a hazard to health or safety because of inadequate maintenance and abandonment since 2012. The building is dilapidated, unsafe, and unsecure. The property is a public nuisance and must be abated or satisfactorily rehabilitated. Any abandoned and vacant building that sits for more than 90 days without climate control, supplied water, electric services, or constant maintenance, and of sewer air gaps has deteriorated, is inadequately maintained, and is unsanitary enough to be uninhabitable. Uninhabitable, uninhabitable buildings are a hazard to any future occupants' health and safety, a blight to the neighborhood, and unless abated or satisfactorily rehabilitated, will continue to be a public nuisance and detract from the welfare of Sanford. Do I have a motion to approve? Council Brink?
So moved.
Is there a second? Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion among the council? Seeing none, I will ask for a vote. All those in favor, by a show of hands. Motion passes unanimously of all those present. Thank you. 10 Lennox Street. 22-449-01. This is a hearing to determine whether 10 Lennox Street identified as tax map K34- This is a hearing to determine whether Ten Lennox Street, identified as Tax Map K thirty-four, Lot nine, and further described in a deed recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds at Book one-eight-three-one-six, page six-seventy-one, and mortgage recorded at Book one-eight-three-one-six, page six-seventy-four, is a dangerous building or a nuisance within the meaning of seventeen MRSA Sections twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine, and to determine what, if any, remedy is appropriate. I'll declare the public hearing open. Ian, you can present for the city.
Just gonna remind you, it's not a public hearing.
Oh, I just, did I say public hearing? I just thought I said hearing.
I think you did, but.
If this, I will say, I'll declare the hearing opened.
Okay. So this, this is Ten Lennox Street. It, it, it looks like an abandoned building. It frankly is. However, it doesn't categorize yet under our vacant and abandoned building ordinance. It would not, at this point, yet meet the, the state statute for the same. I'm gonna just walk you through the photos here, starting in the rear yard. There's, there's trash, garbage piled against the side of the building. These, these photos were taken, I think that's last Tuesday on September twenty-seventh. There's a, there's a vehicle on blocks sticking out from under the building. The garage windows are missing. There's a tent set up in the backyard with some chairs and things burned. This is another picture of the backyard. This, this door to the basement is open, and this is another picture a little further off, but all the windows are blacked out, so there's either garbage bags in front of them, boards placed in front of them, and it, it, it might look normal from the street. This is the picture from the street and from the side yard. You can see plants growing up and over utility lines entering the building. A picture from the side with the plant overgrowth. You can see right, right where the cursor is, that the lights are on inside the house. No, no one is, is home. And a picture from the backyard. I would say that the smell from, from where this picture is taken is, is rather overwhelming from, from the smell emanating from the basement. And to bring you back to the other side of the building quickly, this is where the, the other side of the building. As I understand, the, from, from multiple police emails, is that the building owner has allowed people to come and go freely. He's allowed the building to be modified, resulting in unsafe and unsanitary conditions, dangerous to life and property, as, as indicated in the police reports between twenty-twenty and twenty-two, and the notice of violation in order to vacate the property on August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two. There's, there's trash around and, and plants. The garage and the building are open and unsecure. The property is owned by Matthew Howell. This is the deed. There's a mortgage on the property that, that, and, and an assignment of that mortgage. These are the parties, Matthew Howell, including the mortgage companies. They were noticed. This is the notification, the, the service by sheriff to Matthew Howell. He was served in hand at One Lehman Way Alfred, with parentheses, Y.C. Jail. The, these are the certified mailings. I have received no response. As, as the notice says, it's got my name and telephone number on there if someone wants to discuss one of these properties prior to, after they've received their notice. They can contacted, contact me. I've received no contact from the mortgagees, and as well, this was advertised in the newspaper, just in case we weren't sure who owned the building. This, this is the order to vacate that Erin provided, and I'm just scrolling through here to look for the pictures. The, it, it, the basement's unsanitary. Erin noted that there's been, there's obstructed paths of travel. The floor to the basement and doors are nailed closed. I'd like to hear a little bit more from Erin about this in a moment. The interior and exterior doors are nailed shut. There's standing water and filth in the basement, and there, there's piles of trash. There's rodents in the basement and getting into trash in the interior, and interior doors are nailed, nailed shut. These are the black and white photos of the condition that Erin saw this building on August sixteenth. Pictures of the interior, and then as well, the, the color, the color photos. Looks like they were growing something in the basement. There looks, looks like that's maybe potting soil. There's water in the basement on this picture, and it looks as if people have put things on the basement to walk around, as I understand that that's potting soil, but also sewage. That's, Erin, would you be willing to elaborate on, on what you observed in the building?
Sure. So we were brought into the home, and the gentleman was going to take us down to the basement from the interior of the home, but could not. The interior doors had been nailed shut to the basement. They'd also been nailed shut on the rear door, so that those doors could not be opened. So the only access to the basement was through the, the rear. They did have a broken septic pipe that was leaking into the basement. Bags of kitty litter, as well as the potting soil, were an attempt by the occupants to absorb some of that affluent that was throughout the basement. So certainly, life safety concerns, unsanitary. There was no way to, you know, for them to, they had been like that for, for, we'd been getting complaints, actually, from neighbors that stemmed that, that visit, that, that smell was coming from the property. So we had to order that vacated until that situation can be remedied, and the building can be brought up to habitable standards.
Thank you. So the, the water's still on. There's a sixty-five dollar and eighty-five balance. The sewer has a two-hundred-eleven and forty-one cents balance. Property taxes are current. There is an electrical meter. This will require a vacant building license before November. That's ninety days from the, the time that it was vacated. It, as far as occupancy permits, it has been posted against occupancy as of August sixteenth, and there are no active permits on the property. Am I missing anything, Erin?
No, just, again, just to reiterate that lots of calls about the exterior as well. My photos in my NOV also showed piles of trash. They keep piling up there. So that is not the only instance of, of the trash and debris repeatedly piling up. Unfortunately, it's just not a safe building.
So the police reports and complaints, I believe, are about three pages long on this. They go back, this is the period between twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-two. Variety of calls, I see terrorizing, terrorizing, threatening, burglary, illegal dumping, trespassing multiple times, disturbances, and disturbance, multiple disturbances. This is a very long list in the, in the general scheme of things. I think the, the record holder for pages of this is, is three pages.
Thank you, Ian. Is there anyone representing the owner here tonight? The other party? Can I just ask one clarifying question of you before we go on? The owner is in York County Jail, correct?
That's correct.
That's why, all right. So, but these problems began almost from the first, when the property was turned over to this owner, I think. I mean, it doesn't seem like it's been, I was trying to, it's, I mean, that's a lot to happen, which probably, which drove this process to be at a quicker pace than normal, normal. I mean, it deteriorated quickly, it seems to me.
So it looked like the property transferred on, on, in, in July, July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty.
Right.
And if I look at the police reports, the, the issues are going back, I mean, it's the same period.
That's right.
So, right.
It, it.
It's not necessarily because the owner is not tending the property. It's.
There are a lot of issues, and it's been a, a, a real issue for the neighborhood. So I'm just, wanted you to make sure that that is clear, that that many reports in one property indicates a huge problem, but for the whole neighborhood. So there's nobody else here to speak? Any other clarifying questions of Ian, before we go to the next? Counselor Turmath?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ian, a real quick clarifying question, just a technicality, but the owner, who's currently in custody, correct? Was, has he been given notice on this whole process while in custody?
Yes. And I, I've got it, I don't know if you can see that on your screen.
We could. It was up.
Yep. But that's the service. Persons are required to be served by sheriff.
It actually states that he was at One Lehman Way when they served it. Counselor Turmath?
Yeah, thank you, Ian. I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And, and we'll continue that throughout the process, who receive the findings in order by, by sheriff's service, as well as any future actions we take after that.
No, we make sure. I mean, if we hadn't been able to, it, it's been helpful to be able to know where he is and be able to make sure he gets those notices.
It is helpful.
Going forward. Well, I mean, sometimes that's the difficult thing, but we know where he is, and he will get them, so, and I don't, and I think it's appropriate, so. Then I will declare the hearing closed. Go on to the next item. Twenty-two dash four-five-zero dash zero-one. Based on the testimony and other evidence presented at the hearing pursuant to seventeen MRSA Sections twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine regarding Ten Lennox Street, what does the City Council find are the facts, and what does the City Council adjudge? Based on the testimony of those present and other evidence presented and made part of the record, the Sanford City Council hereby attest to the testimony and evidence and hereby finds the following facts. A, the building, the property, the, the building property owner allowed people to come and go freely and modify the building, resulting in unsafe and unsanitary conditions, dangerous to life and property as evident by the police reports between twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-two, and notice of violation in order to vacate the property dated August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Unsanitary conditions, including trash and garbage, have accumulated on the property, and noxious odor permeates the rear yard from the offal in the basement and sewer system. Plants are overgrowing the building. See, the building and garage are unsecure. D, the most recent notice of violation in order to vacate on August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, found violations of City Code Section ninety dash thirteen-B five, two thousand fifteen International Property Maintenance Code as adopted by reference. Property may not be occupied until sanitary and safe. Unsanitary conditions in the basement. Obstructed paths of travel in the basement, doors and floor nailed closed. Interior and exterior doors nailed shut. Standing water and filth in basement. Piles of trash, rodents in basement and exterior, indoor, indoor, interior door is nailed shut. Water service and sewer service have amounts owing as of September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. The property is uninhabitable and may not be occupied. A vacant building license is required. Based on the foregoing findings, the municipal officers adjudged that the property is a dangerous building and nuisance because the building is unsafe, unsanitary, a fire hazard, and unsuitable and improper to how it is occupied. Egresses in ways are blocked, constituting a danger to life and property. Property is a hazard to health and safety because of inadequate maintenance and care, and because evidently the owner has abandoned the building by allowing people to come and go freely without presence or management. Property is a public nuisance and must be abated or satisfactorily rehabilitated as it is uninhabitable. Uninhabitable buildings are a hazard to any future occupant's health and safety, a blight to the neighborhood, and unless abated or satisfactorily rehabilitated, will continue to be a public nuisance and detract from the welfare of Sanford. Do I have a motion to approve? Counselor Brink?
So moved.
Is there a second? Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, all those in favor, by a show of hands. That is unanimous vote of all those present. Nine Grove Street, twenty-two dash four-five-one dash zero-one. This is a hearing to determine whether Nine Grove Street, identified as Tax Map L twenty-six, Lot forty-one, and further described in a deed recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds at Book one-nine-zero-eight-seven, page eighty-four, and then now a deed record at Book one-nine-one-zero-seven, page six-seventy-six, is a dangerous building or a nuisance within the meaning of seventeen MRSA Sections twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine, and to determine what, if any, remedy is appropriate. I'll declare the hearing open, and Ian, you'll present for the city first.
Yes, thank you. So Grove Street, it's the corner of Grove Lane and, and Grove Street. This is behind, excuse me, the, behind the CVS across from Hannaford on Main Street. According to the tax records, the, the, the current owner is Megg, Meggerson, Susan. I was checking the Registry of Deeds this afternoon, just to get some insight as to when this property became abandoned. It looked as if Meggerson, Susan, and Michael was, it was deeded to, to Susan in two thousand seventeen. They had previously owned it together since two thousand six, and Susan individually since two thousand four. It went into foreclosure sometime between twenty twenty-seven and twenty-twenty. The.
Did you mean twenty seventeen and twenty-twenty?
Twenty seventeen.
You said twenty twenty-seven. I mean, we haven't.
Twenty seventeen and twenty-twenty. And then, just recently, this is the beginning of August, it was deeded to a property, an, an owner called Blue Skies Properties LLC. This is the entity that was noticed of the hearing. Additionally, upon later research, also found out that there was another entity through a mortgage. This would be, I'm looking for the name here, but this Home Again Development Services with a mortgage of a hundred and eleven thousand and change on, on the property. The mortgage was subsequently discharged on September seventh, and Blue Sky Properties deeded this to Home Again Development LLC. This LLC is registered to Mitchell Cody LaChapelle. He is on Zoom tonight, and I, I assume that he would like to, to speak at some point when it's appropriate. Here's a copy of the notice. These are the certified mailings that went to Blue Sky Properties. I also reached out to Blue Sky Properties. They are based in Westbrook and, and Saco. I called them on the phone and, and asked them if they're aware of the hearing, and, well, that they've received it, and if they had any questions as well about the status of the property. They received no response. Erin, I believe you also reached out to them as well. Is that correct?
I did receive a response when I left a message, and they just stated that they already were selling the property.
Okay. All right. So they did, in fact, sell the property on to, to Home Again Development Services. And then additionally, to make sure we covered all the bases regarding this, we did advertise this in the newspaper for three weeks, when we aren't sure as to who the owner might be. I did reach out after the, the notice, excuse me, after the material was provided for the City Council agenda last Friday, I, I provided a copy of the notice to Mitchell LaChapelle. City Council agenda last Friday, I, I provided a copy of the notice to Mitchell LaChapelle, and he responded. We, we haven't spoken, we were, he said, we would talk on Monday, but I received no call. I did receive a packet of pictures that I've included from him, and I'd like to, when, when the time is appropriate, also ask him as to when those pictures were taken. And he said that his, that the house was abandoned, it is not currently abandoned, as it is owned by me and diligently, and diligently working on it. I am not from anywhere near Sanford. The deal fell into my hands, however, glad to get this one back up and running and provide more housing for the community. Again, a light cosmetic remodel, kitchen cabinets, flooring, some new lighting, light, lighting, paint, et cetera. I'm not sure, I'm expected to prove, hopefully you'll be able to, be able to advise. Before the meeting, I will attend virtually, have never experienced something like this with the municipality before, so I'm a little confused as to what is going on here. Talk soon, Mitch LaChapelle, LaChapelle. And I, that's, that's my notice to him via email. The notice is a violation. The, the first one that I've got on record in, in the packet with, with you is from, I think it's January, April, April fifteenth, and, and I'll, I'll go into the pictures a little bit here. There's issues of the chimney deteriorating, clack, cracked glass and window. It appears to be shot out by a pellet gun, is what Aaron wrote. There's, there's rotted wood in places in the structure, and the fence is broken and missing pieces. There's broken glass all over the yard. The exterior surfaces are not maintained. The chimney is not maintained, and, and there's broken handrails and guards on the front step, and Aaron wrote, missing covers on external GFCI outlets and removal extension cords from the, remove extension cord from the side yard. It appears as if the, the electrical on the outside of the building is not proper. So, these are some of the pictures that Aaron took. You can see the, the cracks running down the chimneys, and some of the broken windows, and in this case, at that time, the electric, electrical meter was, was absent, and as well, some of the, some of the faces of the building showing some rot. The, the issues with the fence, and then the multiple notices on the, on the door from the variety of property maintenance companies. Glass, so definitely abandoned here, and these are some of the issues with the, one of the chimneys. You can see the bricks missing, the cracking in the chimney. Aaron points out the points, the, the places where some of the grass was, the glass was cracked, and then also some of the debris in the yard. Other, other instances of rot, holes in the chimney, broken glass. So, very thorough as to its state of abandonment and its property deficiencies. Broken handrails, glass. And then, this was particularly interesting, I have the, I don't, legal counsel that was in here, Kylie Germaine, we've had a couple conversations about this property, and, and particularly this property management company, Guardian Asset Management. She was referring to me that she was at a dangerous building hearing in Augusta, and was questioning the, the professionalism of, of Guardian Asset Management. So, that, these are the, the emails, so we're, we're, the preservation company is signed by the bank. We'd like to inform you that we have remedied violations. We request you look at the picture below and let you know if the property is in compliance or not. As I understand, Aaron, that they had left debris on the neighbor's driveway as well. And these partic-, these pictures, that you can see someone's hand here putting in new guardrails and patching different, patching the chimney, it looks like, putting a coat of lipstick on it. And, and so-called parging of, of the chimney and replacing fencing, but very much a slipshod repair at that time that, that has really hidden some of the, the long-term, the, the larger issues with the property. Aaron also sent a similar letter to Blue Sky Properties, asking for their statement of intent, that would be the, when, when are they, when are they going to sell it? When are they going to fix it? And, and when, when are you going to make it habitable again? And then as far as the utility report goes, the water is currently on. A new meter was installed and, on, on a, September eighth, so that's, that's progress. The water was previously off since June twenty twenty. There's a snow balance on the sewer, the property taxes are current, there's currently an electrical meter. The vacant building license expired. It does need a new one by this new owner. The occupancy permit is expired, it's, it's technically uninhabitable right now until deemed otherwise. With regard to construction permits, there is an open electrical permit for a service entrance and electrical fixtures. However, it appears as if there is work taking place without, without construction permits. There were instances of vandalism in twenty twenty and, and, excuse me, in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two as well on this property. So, and then as far as the photos go, these were taken on the twenty-seventh as well, just as the other ones. You can see some of the heating system left on the side of the driveway, there's a dumpster, looks like it's being junked out. Looks like some repair work's being done. This is a pile of debris that's in the yard still, on the other side of the fence. I can't tell whether that door from here is, is boarded, or whether it's a door. And another picture of the debris. Looks like siding's been replaced, which is not required for a permit, but it shows that some progress or, or some work is taking place on the side of the building. You can see some electrical fixtures being installed, or, or exposed wiring, excuse me, on the exterior. And then, you can see the new service entrance also prepared, but I'm a little confused by this service entrance as it's, as it's from, it appears to be from the prior property management company. So, they started that work, but did not complete it. And then you can see their repairs of the chimney, or their lipstick placed on the chimney. And then just another picture of the vicinity. I'll, I'll switch over to the pictures that the, that the property owner provide me, provided to me in an email last night. So, it looks as if the, the siding that was installed last Tuesday has been painted. It looks like a railing is on the side, on one side. I did take a drive-by this afternoon, this railing is disconnected at this point. And then there's a, then you can see the prior electrical meter installed with the existing newly-installed service entrance prepared at this, at this, at this point. I, I don't know whether that could be hooked up or not. And then, let's see, another picture of the exterior, yep, and there's that, that railing that's, that was on the side as of this afternoon. Looks as if the dumpster's been removed at this point, and someone's painting the garage. There's a boiler in there. I would, I would question, and, and I think it would be important to verify that it's functional and, and hasn't been water damaged, but it looks like someone has spent some time and, and worked on it, a fair amount. And I don't know whether, you know, never been inside this building, so I can't attest to the, the equipment. I would say that, you know, at a minimum, this thing needs to be inspected for electrical and plumbing, just like any other abandoned building. And they did take some pictures of the roof membrane. It does, I, I think that's, I can't tell as to whether or not that's in good shape or not. It looks to be a little worn and, and pitted, but it, it might be serviceable. A substantial amount of work has taken place on the interior. I would imagine that any of this work would require at a minimum plumbing permits. I think if, I don't know whether the electrical permit would capture that work as well. Looks like some drywall and, and has been placed. I would assume that it, that the wall cavities would have been insulated, and that would require a permit as well. It looks like some finished work, they've taken it down to the subfloor and multiple openings in the wall. Again, this is, I can see subfloor either laid down or, or on top, and I don't know whether that was the current owner or a prior, prior owner. And, and it looks, this would be, the baseboard has been, baseboard heating's been removed, doesn't look like it's been replaced yet. So, these are some of the pictures that were provided by the owner. And this looks like a picture of the, the garage. So, I think I, Aaron, am I missing anything as far as the conditions of this property?
No, the, you covered the items on the notice of violation. We did receive a complaint which urged us to visit the property and complete that initial inspection with those violations. And while Guardian did try to remediate some of those things, they didn't pull any permits. They did a, a poor job on the chimney repairs, so we would want to make sure that everything, including the chimneys, were in, in good condition, and that there's no danger of that collapsing or falling over into the neighbor's yard. So, like you mentioned, we would want to see permits, plumbing permits, building permits, replacements of that exterior window, as well as any drywalling that would have been done. We would want to have permits on that.
Thank you.
May I ask a question before we go on? Have there been any permits pulled for the work that the owners sent us the pictures of that's been done?
No.
Thank you.
Real quick, there was-
Other than the electrical.
Just an electrical, but that's it.
And no inspections have been done of that, it's just it's been an open, it's been a permit that's been opened.
Thank you.
I believe the owner's present, if you've got no more questions for me.
I just have one before we go on, and that is about an occupancy permit. Prior to, if, if we go through with this and we have a rehab plan, then the chimney would have to be inspected, and all of those other elements would have to all be part of that rehab plan to be inspected, so, prior to granting the occupancy permit.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. LaChapelle, I know that you're on Zoom. I see you there.
How you doing?
Welcome.
Hi, yeah, I'm the owner, I'm the new owner of Nine Grove Street. So, yeah, it's being worked on right now. We have open electrical permit. The reason there's been no inspection is because the rough-in is not complete. As far as the window, I guess I will have to pull a retrospective permit for that. I didn't realize that was a permitted item for a replacement window. Certainly will pull that. As far as drywall, there was no new drywall added, it was paneling, and it was skimmed over with joint compound to make it resemble drywall and painted. Plan for the house, just super light remodel, flooring, paint, trim, kitchen cabinets. There have been no plumbing permits pulled yet, because the, the countertops aren't even in. I believe there's only one or two traps in the entire house being replaced in the scope of work, which the plumber will certainly pull permits for, I'm sure.
Mitchell, you, you understand that we'd like to have the building brought to a habitable state, and, and as such, I think what you'd need to do is, is have it looked over by a plumber to make sure all the plumbing is functional, the electrical is functional, and a general construction permit opened up to carry on with, with the work that you've, with, the work that you've done so far. So, to make sure it's really in a, in a good occupancy status, so that, I think your intention is to sell it, right? I mean, you, you're not here for the long term.
Correct. That's correct, yes, I'm a real estate investor.
Anybody have any questions for the owner? Mr. LaChapelle, can I ask you a question? You do understand our concerns and why we were asking some of the questions that we were about the occupancy permit, that you will need to go through certain things in order to obtain that occupancy permit, without which I'm assuming you won't be able to sell the house.
I understand, yes, correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anything else? Any, no, I don't see any questions here. Oh, did you have your hand up? Counselor Martell?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, it looks like you're doing some, some work on the house, and that's good to see, so, look forward to hearing it come off from the status and getting back on the market, so, thank you.
Thanks, appreciate that, look forward to writing another house for Sanford.
And just as I said to Mr. Frichette, you know, you can reach out tomorrow and, and obtain a rehabilitation plan and, and work through the code enforcement officer, office to get that, that, that occupancy permit.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other hands or information to be shared, oh, oh, Mr. Frichette, honestly, this is a, a hearing, kind of a legal thing, so we're listening, hearing from the parties involved, okay? I appreciate that, you might, but you're not involved in this particular hearing. I will declare the hearing closed and go on to the next item. Twenty-two dash four five two dash zero one. Based on the testimony and other evidence presented at the hearing pursuant to seventeen MRSA Sections twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine regarding Nine Grove Street, what does the City Council find are the facts and what does the City Council adjudge? Based on the testimony of those present and other evidence presented and made part of the record, the Sanford City Council hereby attest to the testimony and evidence and hereby finds the following facts. A, the building, the property was abandoned as defined in thirty A MRSA Section three one zero six B and City Code Section one four nine dash six point three by the prior owners, and as evidenced by no water service to the building between June twenty twenty and September twenty twenty-two, and no habitable occupancy during that time. A vacant building license was issued beginning in February two thousand and nineteen. There were police reports of vandalism in twenty twenty-one and twenty, you have twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, is it? Or are they both in twenty twenty-one? I just want to make sure I have this right.
There are reports of vandalism in, in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, okay. Indicating inadequate maintenance and attention. Personal property and furnishings are absent from the property, and any remaining personal property is damaged or unusable and generally describable as junked debris, household trash, and possibly hazardous, and is a fire hazard, and is unsanitary. Parts of the property have deteriorated, including the two chimneys, and structure rot. Expiration of the vacant building license. B, the most recent notice of violation in order to correct on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, found violation of City Code Section ninety dash thirteen B five, two thousand and fifteen International Property Maintenance Code as adopted by reference. Two chimneys are deteriorating. Window glass cracked, rotted structure wood, fence broken and missing pieces, glass all over yard. Exterior surfaces unmaintained, chimneys unmaintained, broken handrails and guard, or guards on front steps. Exterior electrical improper. Exterior electrical improper. C, the code enforcement officer demanded a statement of intent pursuant to the vacant building license requirement, including expected dates of repair work, maintenance, expected dates of sale or foreclosure, and when the building will be reoccupied pursuant to City Code section one-four-nine dash six-point-nine-six on September seventh, twenty-twenty-two. There was no direct response to the demand letter. The vacant building license has expired. An electrical permit was opened on August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. However, other construction work is apparently being done without permit, which is dangerous to life and property and a fire hazard. E, the property is uninhabitable and may not be occupied. A vacant building license is required. Based on the foregoing findings, the municipal officers adjudicate that the property is a dangerous building and nuisance because the building is unsanitary due to the length of time it has been vacant without climate control constitutes a hazard to health or safety because of inadequate maintenance since twenty-twenty and abandonment by the prior owner. Parts of the building have deteriorated and then were inadequately patched or covered. The property is a public nuisance and must be abated or satisfactorily rehabilitated. Any abandoned and vacant building that sits for more than ninety days without climate control, supplied water, electrical services, or constant maintenance of sewer air gaps has deteriorated is inadequately maintained and is unsanitary enough to be uninhabitable. Uninhabitable buildings are a hazard to any future occupants' health and safety, a blight to the neighborhood, and unless abated or satisfactory rehabilitated, will continue to be a public nuisance and detract from the welfare of Sanford. Do I have a motion to approve? Deputy Mayor Hurlahey?
I'll motion to approve.
Motion, is there a second? Counselor Brink?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, all those in favor, by a show of hands. Motion passes unanimously by all those present. And thank you, Mr. LaChapelle, for attending this evening.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. And this is our final one. We're doing okay. Eight York Street, twenty-two dash four-five-three dash zero-one. This is a hearing to determine whether Eight York Street, identified as tax map J-three-three, Lot fourteen-C, and further described in a deed recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds at Book one-seven-seven-two-four, page five-seventy-three, is a dangerous building or a nuisance within the meaning of seventeen MRSA sections twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine, and to determine what if any remedy is appropriate. I'll declare the hearing opened. Ian, proceed, please.
Okay. So Eight York Street is roughly at the corner of Johnson, Tibbetts, Avon, and that neighborhood. And it's owned by Lucas Hilton. He's owned it since two thousand eighteen, purchased it from Richard Fogg and Guilford Barubi. This is the deed. There's a, a mortgage on the property. It was assigned to Freedom Mortgage Company. This is the notice of the hearing. It went to Mr. Hilton at his address, Eight York Street, as well as Freedom Mortgage Corporation. I did receive a call from Freedom Mortgage Corporation after they received this notice. I have not, I don't know whether they plan to attend.
Ian, this is Eric Skelly from Freedom Mortgage in attendance.
Could you wait, please? I'm just going to, you'll have a chance to speak, but I'm going to let Ian just proceed with his presentation. Thank you.
Sure. I was just identifying myself, so he, he said he didn't know we were here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Notice of this hearing was by Sheriff's Service to Mr. Hilton at his address, and these are the copies of the certified mailings that went to Freedom Mortgage. The, this, this property, the building owner has allowed the property to be, to become a public nuisance, impacting the neighborhood in a manner that is dangerous to life and property because of the improper use and occupancy of the property, as evidenced by the police reports between twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-two. Notice of violations for chickens running at large dated April fourth, twenty-twenty-two, lack of power, and use of a generator dated August eighth, twenty-twenty-two. There are unsanitary conditions on this property, including accumulation of trash, garbage, and junk. I'll, I'll run you through the pictures here. This is a property from the, the, from the front of the property. There's, there's tires stacked across the, the garage. This vehicle has its, its open. You can see in this picture fluids leaking onto the ground. I couldn't tell which fluids they were, but you can, I, I could see dripping of them. You can see them pooled onto this vehicle at the time. There's debris, tires, and, and trailers. It looks to me as if Mr. Hilton is making an effort to clean up the property and trying to screen it a little bit from the, the road. However, there are mattresses. He's, he's clustered a lot of the junk closer to the property. There does still remain some property, some, some debris around, and this area is much cleaner than it used to be. I'm going to hop back just for a minute to the utility reports. There's a water balance of seventy-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. There's a sewer balance of four hundred and forty dollars and ten cents. Property taxes are, are current, however, the, the special assessment of two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for the removal of five vehicles, including an RV, is outstanding at this time. There are electrical meters present. The occupancy permit was suspended for the lack of power on August third, and it was in violation of a chicken permit back in, back in April. This is the police report as far as multiple, mostly animal complaints. The, when I was present on the property, there was a, there was a dog that had come on. I was out in the street and had come on to the neighbor's yard. I don't believe that dog is present on the property anymore. However, there is still a dog in the backyard. Actually, it's, it's right there where I've got the, the cursor. Then these are the pictures of the side yard. You can see the, many of the windows are broken. It looks like it's, the yard is being cleaned up somewhat. These are, these are broken windows, and that's, that's the general condition of the property. Aaron, can you, can you talk about anything else I've missed here as far as this, as this property goes?
So we've had numerous violations through the past years and complaints regarding the exterior of the property being used as a junkyard, and again, the occupants have had generators running at odd times, loose animals throughout the neighborhood, whether it was dogs, chickens. No real, no responses to our office regarding any of the violation notices that we've sent. Unfortunately, the property still continues to have debris and rubbish and garbage on the exterior. As you mentioned, they did clean up some of that, and I believe the, the power is back on, so the order to vacate was abated, but the conditions are still not acceptable and need to be cleaned up. I believe this was declared dangerous back for those vehicles a couple of years ago, so unfortunately, there's still more items that have to go.
Aaron, that last part's just not correct, but it was, there is a court order on, on this building to abate the conditions of the exterior of the property.
Thank you.
So far, we've taken the step of removing the vehicles, and as far as I know, Mr. Hilton, who, who may want to speak, has received multiple letters from myself. I think we're on to the fifth letter at this point, but he has, he has not responded. So that's, anything else, Aaron?
Nope, just want to make sure that the property is, is safe for any occupants, whether the, currently, the occupants that I talked to said that they're renting the property, so at this point now, a rental housing license might be needed if Mr. Hilton is no longer living there. So some questions that need to be answered and taken care of by the owner.
So who is here this evening to speak? For the owner or the mortgagee?
Well, the owner's here.
Okay.
And then also, there's the, the party in interest as well, the mortgagee.
Okay, so first we'll hear from, I assume you're Lucas Hilton? Would you come up here, please, and give us your story?
That is water dripping, so, and that vehicle has been, is gone.
Can you step up to the mic and, and that's good?
I did take care of the trash. I work sixty hours a week. I have one day off. I am trying, every Tuesday, I have a Tuesday off. I do try to do a little bit as much as I can, and that's just, unfortunately, I'm the only one that providing an income. That's why I work sixty hours a week. The window, I broke mowing the lawn. I had replacement windows. I just haven't had a chance to put them in yet. That's.
Are you occupying the building currently? Or is the building being rented?
I went on vacation for a week, and my power got shut off. The renters that are now gone did not call me and tell me that the power was shut off. Then they decided they were going to rent a generator, which I was unknown of. And when I came home, the power was immediately turned back on. They moved out because I kicked them out, so now there is no renters there but me and my girlfriend, which I am the owner, and I am working on every, like I said, every day, every Tuesday, I spend, I go to the dump. I, I'm trying. Just the best I can do.
Are there any children living in the property?
No, ma'am. The chickens are gone. They were in a pen, and something like a possum or whatever must have attacked and killed two of them. That's why the other ones escaped the containment they were in, but I gave them to my mother now, so the chickens are gone. When I did talk to Aaron, I told him that I would be getting rid of them.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions of this person, or we'll listen to the mortgagee first? Counselor Turmath?
Yes, real quick, thank you again for being here, but a real quick clarifying question. I just, I just want to know, do you have a, a future plan to, you know, get all this remedied?
Absolutely. I purchased this home from my grandfather. It is an older home, but a lot of the stuff was replaced. New furnace, new oil drum, all the, a new toilet, all the fixtures, everything has been replaced. All the appliances are brand new. It's just, I'm working on the outside. Like I said, unfortunately, I work sixty hours a week, if not more, and, you know, I have time to mow my lawn and maybe do a dump run, you know, and then I've, that's just where I'm at.
Counselor Martel?
Yeah, I just had a question about all the animal complaints. Is that, was that around the chickens or the dogs or?
No, my, my dog, I put, she keeps, she can slip out of her collar. So I have recently purchased a in-ground fence, which I had some issues with that, so I'm working on that, but now that has all been taken care of, so that's what the animal thing would. And she is a pit bull mastiff, so if anyone sees that, they freak out. You know what I mean? It's just a thing. But I've taken care of the dog thing and doing what I can.
Counselor Turmath?
Sorry, one last question. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I noticed that you said your windows were all broken in the house, so, and you, what's your source of heat?
I have a furnace.
Okay.
And I would stove supplemental.
It's, so we're getting into wintertime. I just want to make sure that, you know, you have the ability to be safe in your house.
Oh, absolutely. The furnace works perfect. Like I said, it's a brand-new furnace. It was just serviced by Thibetos. My oil drum is full, and I'm ready for winter. And that window is a double pane, and I do, I do have windows out back. Didn't get to them this year, but hopefully next year. And I do put up the plastic because they are old windows, so the home is sufficient for heating.
Thank you, Lucas. We will hear from Eric Skelly from Freedom Mortgage. You're on Zoom?
Hi, yes, thank you.
Do you have the ability to show your video, please?
Um, one second.
It's the thing that looks like a camera. There you go.
There you are.
Thank you.
And, and just very briefly, I, I, we're just here as sort of a fly on the wall presence, simply because the, the mortgage monthly payments are being made, so there's really nothing as a mortgage that, that we need to do or can do. We obviously like to avoid any penalties and fees related to the property, but the, the mortgage is current, so that, that's our position.
Thank you. Thanks, Ian. Any other questions from counselors? Counselor Turmath?
Ian, a quick question, please. So I just want to clarify that because the house is being occupied right now, you, have you verified any of the, you know, the current repairs that have been made?
No.
Wait a minute, can we just, this is a hearing, so if you want to answer that question, we'll have to have you come up. Let Ian answer it first, and then we'll see.
Not that I know of. Aaron, I asked if you had, if you had taken a look at the property file to see if there had been any inspections done. Were you able to do that?
So I, I have not seen any recent inspections done. We've only been on the exterior to view the, the junk and the debris, as well as the power issue that Mr. Hilton already spoke to. Other than that, there's been no permits pulled in the last few years, so there's, there's nothing that we would have gone in to inspect.
Would it, would it be helpful to, to figure out, to find out, do, do an inspection of the interior? I mean, that, that would, you know, just
Yeah, so
Tell me all those issues to, to clarify them. I don't know.
So, you know, with the exterior being the way it is, it would be good to note the interior wasn't that way, so if the council deemed that necessary as well, it would probably be worth investigating that.
Could I ask if Mr. Hilton would be willing to, to do that, to see if we can, you know, settle this matter?
Like I said, when I purchased the home, the home was inspected, and it did pass. There is nothing wrong with the inside. All these, all the oil drum, all that furnace stuff was all done by my grandfather before I purchased the home. I have done nothing inside. So I don't see a reason for you to come inside and inspect. There's nothing wrong. I got a broken window and some trash outside.
Well, it's, it's a little bit more than that, just based on what I personally have been able to see, so.
Right.
I mean, we've already had to spend over two thousand dollars to remove vehicles from the front, so let's, I mean, that, you don't, you're not disputing any of that.
No, ma'am. But I'm just saying the inside is, is fine. It was just, I do auto body for a living. That's where the cars came from.
Right, but that is not
And I understand.
That is not zoned for that in that neighborhood.
I, I, I understand that, and it's been taken care of, and I will be paying the money, the twenty-five-hundred back when I can. I'm getting a settlement beginning of the year, and I'll be able to pay the twenty-five-hundred.
Counselor Stackpole, you can ask.
I don't want to interrupt you. You, you're all set. I mean, you know, I think the primary reason why we all do this is safety, and I look at those pictures, and like Counselor Turmath, I get concerned that And I look at those pictures, and like Counselor Termath, I get concerned that it's a safe place, you know, for you and, and your girlfriend to live. Last thing any of us want to see is some kind of fire or some other tragedy or whatever in that. And I do have to say the, you're probably not using it, but the wood stove chimney that's coming out of the back of the garage, I guess.
I don't use that anymore.
And then the mattresses, you know, that are...
Yeah, and like I said, I'm cleaning all that up. I'm working on it. It's a work in progress.
And I do hear what you're saying, and I do empathize with your, with your situation in terms of your, your work and things like that. But again, our primary concern is safety. We don't want to, we don't want to see anybody be injured or, or worse. So understand that also with us.
I do, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. I don't have any other questions for you this evening. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ian, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
Well, I was trying to figure out a way to, to remediate the issue. So, as I said, we're on to five letters to, to, to address the issues of the exterior. So, you know, I, I hear what Mr. Hilton is saying, that he, that he's working 60 hours a week and has very little time to, to clean out the exterior of the property. So I, I think what I'd want in a rehabilitation plan is, is some firm deadlines as to, to when that's going to happen. For starters, I mean, I, I think the, what was suggested is the best alternative to determine whether or not, you know, the interior is, is safe and sanitary is to conduct an inspection. But if he's not allowing that at this time, it's, it's, it's hard to, to settle that matter before finding the property a public nuisance. And, and the way it has been used during this time period, whether it was someone who, who he was allowing, occupy the building, running a generator, or two pit bulls roaming the neighborhood and terrorizing the neighbors, those are, those are issues as well. So I, I guess that's, you know, that's, that's the, for starters, I guess, is that I, I'd like to see that, right? So it's, it's the determination of a dangerousness, and then it's coming up with that rehab plan that really is about those, those impacts to the neighbors. You know, it's, it's in some ways, you know, the, the concerns about the interior are his issues. His issues between himself and his mortgage company. But again, I'm, I'm most concerned about those spillover effects to the broader neighborhood and making sure those don't occur in the future.
Madam Mayor, can I ask that question? Yes, you may. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
So basically, to clear up this particular property because it's occupied, and if we declare it dangerous and hazardous, we're doing so for what we've seen on the outside. So those are the items that need to be taken care of. The ability to get inside is more difficult even with this declaration or not?
It is more difficult with the declaration. Yep, it's, yep.
So it's a...
It requires permission either way.
Right, I think, I think the majority of us want to see the, the neighborhood, the, the house cleaned up and, and no further accumulation. And I happen to be, in personal knowledge, that a tenant I evicted the stuff from that unit, because I, I knew it, because some of it I had to actually exit the unit, ended up on his front lawn. So this, 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 this allowing people to put stuff on your front lawn and your back lawn can't continue to happen. I mean, once it's cleaned up, that's how you stop it, from what I can see, if you're allowing people to just dump their stuff on your property.
Okay, I'm going to just say that when we get to...
No, I'm just saying that, I'm just wondering, like, where, where, where does this dangerous building come off, given the fact that this is an outside issue that we're trying to manage?
Right. Right, that, that's, and, and how does it come off? It's when he's, when he's cleaned up.
When he's cleaned up the outside of the building.
This is an outside...
Absolutely.
Some of the others, okay.
Correct. Counselor Martell?
Quick question. I'm seeing an order to vacate here. So you're basically trying to evict from the property until he gets a chance to clean that up, or is that...
That was a previous order of, when they used the generator. It was all in the back.
Okay, so that's been rescinded.
Is that the case, Aaron? It was, you suspended the, the property for occupancy based on lack of power? And what's the status currently?
Yes, that is correct. They did get the power turned back on. But we did have to order the property vacated for the lack of that utility, for the electricity being off. But that was removed when they got power back on.
Okay, so we're still talking about declaring unsafe due to the stuff in the yard?
Correct.
Okay. And that just requires some mitigation plan timeline to work with you guys to do that, correct?
That's right. I mean, it will require...
It's a plan with, with real dates in it.
With deadlines. Can I ask, what, what do you, as far as Lucas, Mr. Hilton here, what, about what those deadlines might be? You know, and, and specifically, and so I see a lot of vehicles being repaired. I think that's one thing, right, that that, that activity...
Has to stop.
Will stop and not continue, not begin again, not, you know, it cease. The, the, this, this in the backyard is, is primarily, is what has to be removed. I mean, it's a, it's, it's, it's a lot of work to do that. So I'd, I'd like to hear from Lucas when he's going to get that done.
And that's, if we do this, that is what you would work out?
Well, I'd like to hear...
Him say it tonight?
I'd like to hear him say it on the record.
Did you have any response to if we, I mean, when we do this and there are dates certain that has to be done? Are you going to be able, will you come up and, and speak into the mic for the record, please?
The mattresses I do plan on removing, they're within 30 days. The trash I did take care of. As far as of that stuff, if I get a carport and put all that stuff in the carport, is that sufficient to get rid of my thing?
Are you talking about the cars that you're using?
No, 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 like the generator, the, just my tools and, you know, the cement mixer and that kind of stuff? Just put it in the carport, just so that you just see a carport in the backyard. Is that...
You would need a permit to work through codes, I believe. So, meaning like, any structure you add to the property needs a permit?
Okay, then I will get the permit.
I'm saying that, you're saying that you're willing to work...
Absolutely.
...with them, because we're, we're going to, I will tell you that I personally am going to vote to do this because I know what has been happening in the neighborhood, just by the condition of the building on the outside. I'm not even going to the complaints that, that generated a whole lot of police reports, just the, the way that the building looks.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Because I think we can go on to the next stage. I'll declare the hearing closed. 22-454-01, based on the testimony and other evidence presented at the hearing pursuant to 17 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859 regarding 8 York Street, what does the City Council find are the facts and what does the City Council adjudicate? Based on the testimony of those present and other evidence presented and made part of the record, Sanford City Council hereby attest to the testimony and evidence and hereby finds the following facts. The building, the property owner, has allowed the property to be a public nuisance, impacting the neighborhood in a manner that is dangerous to life and property because of the improper use and occupancy of the property as evidenced by the police reports between 2020 and 2022, and notice of violations for chickens running at large dated April 4th, 2022, excuse me, lack of power and use of a generator dated August 8th, 2022, unsanitary conditions, including trash, garbage, junk that have accumulated on the property. A vehicle parked in the driveway was visibly leaking fluids onto the driveway and road, which is unsanitary and improper use of this residential property. Building has multiple broken windows, which is unsafe and indicative of inadequate maintenance and unsafe and unsanitary conditions on the interior of the property. Property was posted against occupancy on August 8th, 2022 for no power. The occupancy permit was suspended. Water service and sewer service and property taxes have amounts owing as of September 21st, 2022. Based on the foregoing findings, the municipal officers adjudicate that the property is a dangerous building and nuisance because the building is unsafe, unsanitary, a fire hazard, and improper into how it is occupied. The property is a hazard to health and safety because of inadequate maintenance and care and because of how it is used. Property is a public nuisance and must be abated or satisfactorily rehabilitated as it is a blight to the neighborhood, and unless abated or satisfactorily rehabilitated, will continue to be a public nuisance and detract from the welfare of Sanford. Do I have a motion to approve? Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'll make a motion we approve.
Is there a second? Counselor Brink?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion by the council? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor? All those opposed? There's four in favor, two opposed. Motion passes. The two opposed were Counselor Martell and Counselor Termath.
I was going to say, Mr. Hilton, you need to contact me tomorrow for this rehab plan.
Okay, now I'm going to do the last five all in one order, okay? For those who are maybe watching the agenda at home. Order, after hearing testimony and other evidence presented and then making findings a fact and a judging, 88 Lebanon Street under Agenda Item 445 and 446, 23 Rankin Street under Agenda Item 447 and 448, 10 Lennox Street under Agenda Item 449 and 450, 9 Grove Street under Agenda Item 451 and 452, 8 York Street under Agenda Item 453 and 454. To be a dangerous buildings and nuisances pursuant to 17 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859, the City Council now makes the following orders to abate the nuisance and appropriate corrective actions taken. For Order 455 regarding, regarding 88 Lebanon Street, for Order 456 regarding 23 Rankin Street, for Order 457 regarding 10 Lennox Street, for Order 458 regarding 9 Grove Street, for Order 459 regarding 8 York Street. It is ordered that to protect the health, safety, and welfare, the property is to be immediately secured within 24 hours. And be it further ordered that to protect the health, safety, and welfare, the nuisance is to be immediately abated by removing and disposing of any and all rubbish, debris, vehicles, equipment, household, human, hazardous waste, and dangerous materials from the property. And be it further ordered, if the owner or party in interest demonstrates the ability and willingness to satisfactorily rehabilitate the property by submitting and having a rehabilitation plan approved by the city manager within 30 days of recording this order and carrying out such rehabilitation plan in a timely manner, the order to immediately abate the nuisance may be delayed. Such rehabilitation plan must include, at a minimum, all deficiency listed as part of the findings of fact as herein set forth are corrected. The property is rehabilitated and brought into compliance with all applicable state and local codes and meets all permitting and inspection requirements. And there shall be no occupancy or use of the building until the property has been satisfactorily rehabilitated. And be it further ordered that the city clerk record this order in the York County Registry of Deeds and cause attested copies of this order to be served upon the persons as required by law. And be it further ordered that if this order is not complied with, the city manager is hereby authorized and directed to ask for bids for the abatement of the said nuisance. And be it further ordered that if this order is not timely complied with and no timely appeal is taken, the city manager may undertake the ordered corrective action at municipal expense and recover all expenses, including reasonable attorney fees by means of a special tax or civil action. This decision may be appealed to Superior Court pursuant to main rules of Civil Procedure ADB. Do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'll move to approve that.
Is there a second? Counselor Brink?
So moved.
Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, all those in favor, by a show of hands? That is four. All those opposed? That is two opposed. Four in favor. The two opposed are Counselor Termath and Counselor Martell. Motion passes. Thank you. And we'll see this again in two weeks, correct?
You will.
Let me just find, okay, that brings us to almost 9:30. We're almost done. We probably have three minutes, so I will give everybody like 30 seconds for council member comments. Let's see. Well, we're going to finish at 9:30. That's the way I'm looking at it. So Counselor Termath?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Real quick, in about 20 seconds here.
Good.
Last Friday, I was at the Sanford High School Homecoming game. It was wonderful. I did, something that did warm my heart, though, was, I was happy to see Chase Fromm Willer in attendance at the football game. It was very, very wonderful. And I just want to bring forward to the body here, maybe making a proclamation for young Chase Fromm Willer and, and showing appreciation, you know, from the city, and from, you know, the courage and, and his steadfastness to take on this disease and this fight. And it just warms my heart, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Counselor Brink?
No comment.
Counselor Martell?
Thank you, Ed. A couple different things. One, I had some comments about main access points, handing out... And they're part of heritage, or heritage crossing, crossing is part of that. Basically, they were handing out drug paraphernalia type stuff, part of that being crack pipes, which I understand, you know, trying to have safe use of things, but I don't, I don't agree with that. And I don't know if that's something that any of our tax dollars are going to, but I guess that's something we should look into. Another thing, I heard there was an issue at the Airport Advisory Committee a few weeks ago with some violations of code of conduct...
Really?
...by our mayor. So I just wanted to reiterate that both the charter and the code of conduct require us to go through the, the appropriate channels for directing any employees, so, thank you.
Let's see. Counselor Hanselman is not here. Counselor Stackpole?
Yeah, I want to thank the people that have contacted me over the sudden death of my brother last week. A lot of people may not be aware that that happened because it was late last week and it was out of state. And I've been out of state dealing, dealing with it. But what I wanted to follow up with and say is my brother was a smoker. And, and he died of a sudden heart attack last, I think, Wednesday morning, about 4 o'clock in the morning. Woke up in the morning, had a heart attack, and that was it for him. Could not be revived by rescue or otherwise. So if you're a smoker, then my advice, based on what I see and what I've experienced, is if you're a smoker, time to stop smoking is now, not tomorrow morning or next week. You should stop smoking. It's going to catch up to you. If you're a younger person, and I consider people in their 20s, 30s, even 40s, younger people, you really, you really should stop smoking because it's, it's going to catch up with you in the end. It always does. So anyways, thank you, thank you to everybody, and we're moving on.
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. Sorry for your loss. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Nothing this evening.
And I will just say that I have no comments except to say that any counselor feels that the code of conduct has been broken. They are welcome to bring that in front of the council as an agenda item. You can request it if you like, but I suggest that maybe you might want to explore what really happened at that meeting, which was a meeting that was not on Zoom and against our, our procedures of, of council for every meeting. And, but I always welcome anybody to bring anything forward that they think is a, a breach of our code of conduct. So that's all I have to say about that. Future agenda items. Counselor Termath?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to look into this said incident a little bit further, concern our code of conduct. So for transparency purposes, because I don't, I'm not sure exactly what was entailed. And I think since it was brought up, that we should, we should have it out in the open. Thank you.
Well, everything is out in the open, but there you go. Was that a public, except that meeting? Except the meeting because it wasn't on Zoom, which I didn't attend because, in my opinion, it wasn't a meeting if it wasn't on Zoom. So Counselor Brink, any agenda items?
No.
Counselor Martell?
Yeah, I just have one thing. I think in light of the recent changes to the state constitutional amendment about food sovereignty...
About what? About what?
Food sovereignty.
Thank you.
I'd like to revisit the chicken ordinance and any other related ordinances and whether those are still.
Sure.
Valid.
We'll put that on for a future. We have a lot on our agenda right now. That's probably not going to be right at the top. I'll just say that right away. Counselor Stackpole?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Hurley? And I have nothing. I will declare us adjourned.